Welcome, everybody, to our February thirteenth, yeah, March 13th Board meeting. First, please, Stanford, a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I'm glad you're here. I would like to start off the meeting with an explanation of the recent current events in regard to the POW and MIA flag. There is a formal response that's available that we can give to everybody, but I would like to talk to you, like I've spoken to everybody today in numerous and countless phone calls and emails about what this village board, the intention of this village board, and what we are trying to accomplish. So it's very clear that there's a distinction between what a lot of you are reading and hearing versus what we are actually trying to accomplish here with the village board. So to all of you, what I want to express is, in no way were we trying to ever be disrespectful to our veterans, our prisoners of war, or those missing in action. But we did have a request, and the request really focused on what we were trying to do, which was focus on what are the policies and the procedures and the protocol for what we need to do for the preservation of the flags that are flying here at Village Hall. Very important to us. Those requests came in two forms, and they were both specific. The first request was, why do you not have the flag lighted at nighttime? Very good point. We did not have the light, the flag lighted at nighttime, and we needed to correct that, and it was a very simple fix. We were able, we thanked them for bringing that to our attention. We changed the bulb and got that light, the light changed, and now we're lit up. The second request was specifically to say, why do you only fly the POW/MIA flag? That was it. And I said, I really do not know the answer to that. I don't know if we have a policy or a procedure, but we will take it to the board and we will have that discussion, which we did on our very, I said we were having a meeting very in a few days, and we opened it up at the discussion at one of our workshops under other business for that specific purpose. So we wanted to address those two issues specifically in terms of policy and procedure, okay, going forward. It was very important that we wanted to know what the, if there was, a state policy. We knew that the village, that the national flag, if it was flown for 24 hours, needed to be eliminated. We took care of that. But what we didn't know is what our village policy was on flying the POW/MIA flag because there wasn't unlisted. So we immediately went into doing our research, and as part of our research, we investigated what we could find available on the state website in terms of the New York State Office of General Services for Flag Policy. The flag policy was very specific, and it said, "The POW/MIA flag is to be displayed over all the state buildings and facilities on Memorial Day, POW Remembrance Day, and Veterans Day." We said, "Okay, we got that." We want to definitely know that we're going to follow state policy, but now what do we do about the rest of the days? That only takes care of three. Given that, we said, as part of our vote and part of the thing, we wanted to reach out to our veterans. And so we went directly, and we assigned one of the trustees to go directly to the American Legion and talk directly to the American Legion and to come back with a recommendation. And that recommendation was to help us work on adopting a policy for how to fly the POW/MIA flag. There's that, no way were we going to say, "We are taking these flags down." We kept the flag up at the American Legion Park, which is village property, and we continued to fly that flag all the time. If we were going to take them down, we would've said, "Let's take them down," but that was not our intent. Our intent was to establish a policy, because there was no policy for the village of Rhinebeck. And our intent was to work with our Veterans Association to establish that policy, which we did, and we are, and we reached out to them, right? And it's leaving as late as today, yesterday, and today, we've been in discussion. And I have reviewed this with many of them, and I have also reviewed it with people at the county legislator in terms of Veterans of Foreign Affairs, and many organizations throughout the county who said, "What are we doing?" Including our press, which is here tonight, in terms of what is our policy and what is our procedure to do. So at that meeting, we did take a vote, and we said, the vote, which was four to zero with one abstention, we said, "We want to do exactly that. We want to know that we have a policy that we can follow while we are working on adopting a policy with our Veterans Association." And we are in the process of doing that, and you have my commitment that we will follow through on doing that and working with and establishing a procedure and a policy for the village of Rhinebeck that will demonstrate our commitment to everybody, whether they're a veteran and those who are missing in action and/or prisoners of war, because that was our intent the whole duration of the discussion. We never deviated from that, and we are still working on that, working on that path. So, in summary, and then I will open it up for discussion. The board also identifies that the POW flag flies at the American Legion, which I mentioned, our American Legion Park. But the board is determined and is to, shall continue to fly the POW at our American Legion Park while proceeding with its efforts to assure complacency and create a policy for the village. This is my statement. It is also our desire as a village board to faithfully exhibit respect for our veterans and those either missing or prisoners of war, and to restore the POW/MIA flag at our Village Hall while we are working at it. And we did that. We listened to you, and we said, "Fair." We should not, we did make a mistake. We took the flag down instead of negotiating a policy. Sometimes we get it right, sometimes we don't. But in this case, we said, "Let's restore the flag, because there's no fault in restoring the flag while we are working on this policy." Because then it can't be disputed if we have a policy that is supporting it and can never be, never be defended again. So to that end, we are seeking, not only that, but alternatives to where we can additionally fly the POW/MIA flag along with our National American flag, so that can be flown in the village, and we are looking forward to working with our organizations on doing this. I hope I'm very clear in terms of the intent that we try to do as the board. Unanimously across the board, that was our focus. Our focus was on policy and procedure. If there's any questions, I welcome questions to come forward, but I please would ask you to come up, speak to the mic. If there's, you don't agree with that, what we're trying to go forward, please let us know. If you have a change of what we're trying to do, please let us know. But it's my hope that I've answered most of your questions going forward today and that you understand where we were going.
Can I talk, or does the public talk first?
I open it up to the public.
Okay.
But, you're trustee, you're allowed to speak.
Okay, so, your response, I have a couple of issues with your response after I carefully read it. You're saying, "I abstained." Well, you don't have my name saying abstained, but I'm apparently the person that was the zero. My first response was, "I don't want the flag taken down." I said, "If we're going to vote on this tonight, I don't want the flag taken down, and I'd like to consult with the Legion." He said, "Okay." Two days later, the flag was taken down without any consultant, without me getting back about what the Legion said. Now, I went to the Legion the first, the next day, talked to Dennis McGuire, he's the commander. He said, "I'm not going to be able to come to your next meeting." By the way, this is the next meeting, because you're also saying in here, kind of saying, "I dropped the vote here, drop, drop the ball here."
No, no, he wasn't saying, you're not kidding.
You're saying that, "We're still waiting for trustee Trout at the next meeting." Well, this is the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, well, some people construed that as something else that I didn't get to, back to you right away, so.
Howie, this is not a zero-sum game. It's not a clean game.
Can I say what I'm supposed to say? You guys?
That's fine. Well, I'm the trustee too, I'm just saying.
Okay, well, you can say it.
I totally support you all the time. I mean, come on.
Okay.
We're just trying to sort this out.
Right, so, anyway.
I'm letting him speak.
Yeah, Dennis McGuire said he can't.
I'm letting Howie speak.
Dennis McGuire said he couldn't make it to this meeting because he's away. He said, "But I'll let the Legion know, maybe the Legion will come." Obviously, they're here, thank you. So, I don't know what law you're talking about, New York State law, but, and I thank former mayor Heath Tortorella, who's a member of the Legion also. There's a New York Consolidated Law, Article 19403A, this is New York State. Display a prisoner of war and missing in action flag. Display a prisoner of war and missing in action flag, number one. Every county outside the city of New York, city, town, and village is encouraged to display the prisoner of war and missing in action flag at the building housing its local legislative body, which we are, on all days which the flag of the United States of America is displayed. And that is the policy what the Legion wants to go by. We don't have to wait for Dennis McGuire to come back. That's the policy that the Legion wants.
So we are, I also spoke to Mr. McGuire today and also explained how we went through, and he isn't supportive of working with us as adopting a policy for the village of Rhinebeck. This statement that Howie read tonight and Howie was with us that night was not at our perusal for that, for that evening. It has been brought to our attention, it was brought to my attention today, obviously brought to Howie's attention today. So this is great. This is exactly the type of government we want. We want government participation in establishing this. We were never, 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 never was the intent of this board to do anything different than to make sure we had a policy going forward that supported our flags.
That evening, what we were doing is we were seeking some kind of protocol to look up, and we found state administrative building protocols. You know.
I know, nobody can say, but very specifically, it's the newyorkstateofficeofgeneralservices.gov. Trustee Trout, trustee Lewitt actually brought this up as we were having the discussion, and we read it collectively, and we said, "Sounds like we're not in compliance with the state policy." And clearly, the information that has been shared this evening by trustee Trout is very, very valuable. I think that, if it enters the board, we thought that we might have had that type of information sooner. We didn't. Wish that we had, this probably would've been resolved even sooner, but we, in response to trustee Trout, the policy that we were referencing is what was discussed with all of us there two weeks ago tonight, that trustee Lewitt was able to avail very quickly.
We never, we never closed the door.
In fact, it was a caveat that we can seek input from the veteran community.
Absolutely correct. It was a contingency.
Absolutely all of us wanted to do that.
But we were supposed to wait until we got some information. Two days later, the flag was down. I was under the impression we were going to wait till this meeting, after I consulted with the Legion.
That was not what we voted on that evening, Howie. See, clearly in the records.
Is that in the records?
I haven't finished the.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Please come forward and induce yourself. Not everybody may know who you are, Joe.
Joe Kerthois. I just wanted to know why someone would want to take a flag down. What people have forgotten in this village is how we got where we are today. And I know Howie's family lost a member, was it in Normandy, Howie?
France.
France, yeah, Normandy.
Not Normandy, but eastern part of France.
So.
He's buried there.
A lot of people that have been here their whole lives have had lost soldiers and family members, and to take a flag down, it's disrespectful. And I don't see how anyone can possibly fathom the idea about taking something down that people fought for in their young ages of 17, 18, and 19 and 20 years old. I don't understand how you can sit there and care about what the government has to say about it. This is Rhinebeck's government. We can be different than whatever they say in New York City. And if people want New York City rules, they should go back to New York City. It's getting out of hand. People have to start asking the people of Rhinebeck questions about your decisions. We appreciate the time and effort you put into everything, but this really hit hard. And this is unfair. You know, there's no possible way that a human being knows what it's like to be in war unless you've been in war. I've never been in war, and I'm very fortunate that I haven't. But I know a lot of people in here that their fathers and mothers were in war. A man I had coffee with almost every day of his life, he dug a hole, a stand-up foxhole, and a younger boy came in, in that same hole, and was crying, and Mr. Pitcher said, "Both of us can't be in here." And the kid was so upset, he got out of the hole and dug himself another hole. And when Mr. Pitcher went back, that hole, that kid was dead. So what's it like to be in a hole and have fire go over your heads? I don't know. But I get.
My grandfather knows, and you got to understand, you know, we all have, you know, veteran relatives and everything. Anybody from, from.
Stop interrupting and let people speak.
Okay.
But I'm not saying that you don't understand, but you don't take a flag down unless you get a majority of the people. And this is really, it's wrong. I'm sorry. I really appreciate all the time that every elected official does in this village. I wish I had more time to do it, but it's just out of, it's out of control. You know? I mean, what are we, a bunch of apple knockers, and everyone's got to save us from going, taking the next step because we don't know how to go? It's ridiculous. I'm really sorry.
But you're out of control.
Don't be sorry. You don't. Come on. I'm not much for public speaking, but my name is Melody Fleischauer-Melliniato. I was born and raised in Rhinebeck, unlike many of the board members. If you know me, I don't sugarcoat anything. The board should be ashamed for what they did. They should have not taken the flag down. The flag's back up, that's great, but it should've been never taken down in the first place. I'm understanding there's a conflict of interest here. Social media has a lot going on out there. I understand one person didn't like the looks of it or whatever, and maybe that is the case, because you're thinking about moving it someplace else. It doesn't need to be moved. And there's lights out there, so if the bulb is out, somebody should be noticing this. I have to notice this where I work. And let me tell you something. You can never tell me about the flag. I'm an Army brat, my father served, Sergeant Douglas A. Fleischauer, served in the Army for over 20 years, and a lot of these people in here, he put in the service, and you just spit on them all.
Excuse me, we're not talking, the flag that you mentioned is the American flag.
I understand that.
It's the flag at the top.
I understand. The ways I understand. I know when the flag goes up and when the flag goes down, when it should be illuminated. I know all about the POW flag. I know all about it. What you did was wrong. You backpedaled.
We apologize.
Because you made, yeah, now you apologize because you got all these people here and everybody in it up for. Now you're apologizing.
No, no, we were going to seek opinion from the veteran community. That was always the caveat.
You guys ever go to the Legion? Have you guys ever gone to the American Legion?
Yes, I have. I've been there a bunch of.
Why don't you just ask somebody there?
I've been there a bunch of times.
Then you should've asked, you shouldn't have put it on Howie Trout. You're hanging him out to dry.
No, excuse me, we are not hanging anybody out to dry.
We're not hanging Howie out to dry.
You know what?
I would never hang out Howie out to dry.
Let me finish.
I'm not going to interrupt you, go ahead.
You just did.
I'm not going to stop.
You, as board members, disrespected all servicemen and women in the community who voted you in. I'm truly disgusted with your actions, and I hope that the next election, you're all voted out.
My name is Ray Polite. I am a Vietnam veteran. I have two holes in my legs from being there. So that POW flag is very, very important to me. Those are my brothers that are left over there, okay? That garbage I don't want to hear again. Second of all, we've gone through, I've been here since 1958. We've gone through many, many mirrors, never had this problem. From the day the flag was put up there, it stayed up there. What brought this on now, that you four have decided to take the flag down?
I thought it was very clear in my, and to answer your question, I thought it was very clear.
Somebody had to make a, a complaint.
There was no complaint. It was, I've asked.
So you, the four of you sat together and decided that the flag should come down for no other reason, you four decided?
No, no.
No?
I told you very clearly that we did have a request, and I treat all requests with the same format. If somebody brings a request in that is very unclear, that we need to have a board discussion on, I tell them I'm taking it to the board. We're very open about this. I took this very openly to the board. The request was, "Why do you fly a POW flag all the time?" And I did not have that answer, because we did not have a policy on terms of why we flew it all the time.
The policy is that we have people missing, we have people that were killed.
I want to create, but I want to create a policy so this is never debated again. Never.
It was never debated again. We, we all knew what it was for. You, so you had one person who didn't like this, is what you're trying to tell me.
We had a request come to the board, that is correct.
From one person, from one person, right? So if, if one person can request something, then I request that the four of yous give up, quit right now. It's a request. If one person, if one person carries that much power for the four of yous, then I should carry the same power and ask you to retire. Quit.
You can make any request you would like to the board.
Then make sure we take that into a meeting also. Thank you.
Make that a policy.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you. My name is Tina Lamonica. I'm a descendant here, I've been here for 30 years. I'm a 1997 graduate. I have two younger sisters that went through here. I'm a seven-year active-duty Navy veteran. I served aboard the USS Baton, and in case you happen to be unfamiliar with that, it was named after the USS Baton death, well, the Baton Death Mark, that held over 80 Filipino and American soldiers, captain, marched them over 66 miles with minimal food and water. Over 30,000 of them never made it back home. These were prisoners, not just American prisoners, Filipino, your Asian country. Are you freaking kidding me? Are you kidding me? I left this town for 18 years. I came back because Sunday will be three years that I lost my mind, and that's why I came back, because Rhinebeck was home. And if this was brought to your attention and you wanted the opinions of veterans, why did you have an impromptu meeting? Why didn't you put something out there? Attention, emergency meeting, temporary decision, we will be brought to and made a final decision at a later date. Who are you to decide this whole freaking town? It's not like, "Hey, can we please dispatch to the sidewalk?" No. This is something that affects everybody, and you want to know why everyone's so pissed off? It's because you made a decision for us. Have you ever seen a man or woman jump overboard, or have you ever been woken up in the middle of the night? Because someone decided to take their life because of what they've been through. Do you know any of those freaking people that served on the USS Cole when it was bombed? I do. My cousin Eugene was killed in the first suicide bombing in Iraq in March 2003. So please, come to me and tell me how you made such an educated, impactful decision on this town without even discussing it with this town? Without discussing it? These roots run deeper than yours, than you sitting here, having coffee and be like, "Well, one person was upset, so let me put him on my titty." Excuse my French, but I am a sailor and I don't sugarcoat anything. And everyone here that knows me knows that. And I'm very outspoken, I'm not afraid to hurt your feelings, because what you did, you hurt everyone's feelings and didn't give a shit and didn't look back.
We said we were sorry, and we do give a shit, okay?
It's kind of too late, right?
Well, I can see that.
Sorry, not sorry.
I'm a resident of, well, I was a resident of Red Hook for 17 years and now a resident of Rhinebeck for the past year. I just wanted to make it clear that the overall idea that I could glean from your decision was that we made a decision without having full knowledge of what decision you were making. That you, you made a decision to take down the flag based on, "Oh, well, we don't know protocol." What is the protocol? So why, so let's take it down. Before even knowing, let's take it down. You've heard a lot of people in this town. The, the lack of foresight in this decision was just unbelievable. You actually, you said, "We don't know, so let's act." What kind of leadership does that show about this village?
Most of you know me. I was mayor here for almost 30 years, and another nine years as highway superintendent. Every war since the Civil War, a close relative has been involved in combat. The only ones that didn't get in combat were my brother and myself, although he served in Germany and I served in Korea. So we have a pretty good coverage. What I'm concerned with, I understand by the grapevine, that you got one complaint on that flag. And if that is true, you've got to change your approach. In 30, 39 years, we probably, I can't imagine how many complaints we got, but you have to know how to handle them. You can't jump in on every complaint you get, and this is one. And I think you made a huge mistake by getting involved with it to begin with. We always took the complaints under advisement, and we'd talk about it, if we felt it was important, we would follow through on it. But obviously, if they kept us in for the number of years that we were there, we did the right thing. And I think that's important. You've got to know where to draw the line. I want you to consider a normal complaint, a good complaint, and what isn't. Obviously, this wasn't. And as far as the POWs go, I always looked on that flag, not now, but as it was in the past. We had two from Rhinebeck that I know of, Ed White and George Davis. They both came through, they survived it, and were Second World War veterans. They were both captured in the Battle of the Bulge. Ed White lived to be 104, I think, 105. And in any event, these people, I think, are being disrespected when that flag was taken down. It never should've been taken down. And I don't care what the town does, that has nothing to do with us. We're a village. And Howie Trout's family not only had a son killed in the Second World War, he had three, they had three other sons that were in combat, and then Howie's father was in Germany after the war. So they had five in that family in combat. So he obviously has a lot of sympathy for the flag, as do most of us here. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, I appreciate all of your input, and, as I said, going forward, we try to get it right, we try to.
we try to get it right. We try to have a meaningful discussion. Obviously in this case, as I said before, we made the wrong decision temporarily while we were doing the analysis. I admit that. Plain and simple. Right? And I stand by that because as a board, we all agreed to do that. Now, we learn and I want to learn as well. So hopefully we can continue because I've listened, we restored the flag and we want to establish, you know, and continue to work as I met with the Maguires, you know, and trying to understand and get working on this as quickly as possible. I want a policy that is sustainable forever.
What is...
Come on up, Ford. Come on up. Sorry, you have to come up.
Okay, my name is Nicole Moren North. I am born and raised here. I have never left this town, not for college, not for anything. I fought, I busted my ass to make sure I could raise my family here. My father was in the war. That flag being taken down is an embarrassment to this town. You're not even giving us an option right now or a thought of what you're going to do with that flag. That flag should not leave this town, should not leave this building. It's ridiculous. It's, I want my kids at this point to run far away. This is not a town I want them to raise their families in, which is why I stayed here. So they could stay here, raise their families, be proud of this town. It's a disgrace. I don't know, Howie Trout, I think is about the only one who can say he's been here long, long, long before any of you. Most of the people standing here today. I'm 39 years old. I have never left. I have four generations of family that have never left this town. And to think that this is even possible, it makes me so angry. What is an option? What other option do you have that you can tell us tonight that you're even contemplating doing with these flags?
Leave the flags where the red...
I'm gonna leave.
Resign!
I, I've heard enough that to leave the flag where it is. I mean...
So what's left to do, what, what protocol, what policy do you want to come in?
That's the policy. We've heard, this is the...
The policy is, don't take it down.
We're hearing a lot of feedback from folks that, you know, represent the veteran community and I've, I've heard enough. So I'm willing to leave it the way it is. I don't want to take it down.
Joanne Post Florence, and I'm not good at this either. Why does something like this need a freaking policy? It's been there forever. Well, for a long time. Why fix something that isn't broken? Because somebody comes up and says, you know, makes a request. Did you really think that was important enough?
Joanne, I am so sorry. In 1986, when the Memorial Wall was completed on Memorial Day, that was probably the first year when the thing, when they, when they had Memorial Day there. And I was there. Jan Struggs walked right in front of me and I took a picture of him. I saw hundreds, thousands of people breaking down and crying. And I do not disrespect the Vietnam veterans. And I'm profoundly sorry. I understand.
Why was it even an issue? You mean to tell me the board, the board thought that was something that really needed to be discussed and make a policy for? Okay, the state has their thing. Don't fix something that ain't broken.
I think that's a very good point. Thank you.
That's why I want to leave it the way it is.
I don't think this particular issue was worth all of this.
I would just take what Mr. Cipperly said and figure out the right problems and the right issues and make an issue out of those because this maybe is a lesson learned. Thank you.
Thank you.
The question I have is, how is the policy going to be developed and what public input will there be as you're developing the policy? I don't want to see it just as another fait accompli. We want to be able to have the public involved and a lot of public feedback as to what the policy for whatever flying, whatever flags, wherever. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So everybody's aware, in my conversation with Mr. Denny McGuire today, who's the commander of the American Legion, he said as soon upon his return that we can engage in a meaningful conversation to do this. He's looking forward to it as much as we, the board, are looking forward to it, which is why we met to say we wanted to get their input.
So you're saying you're still gonna wait for Denny McGuire?
Pardon? The flag is up and the flag is flying.
And it's gonna stay.
And it's gonna stay.
Where it is.
Where it is.
It's not coming down?
It's gonna stay where it is. I'm pretty sure that I will guarantee, I am pretty sure that, let me finish, let me finish. I am pretty sure that Mr. Mc, excuse me, I am pretty sure that Mr. McGuire will work with us on establishing a policy that will keep that flag there forever. I am, I hope so.
Does it really need a policy?
It doesn't need a policy.
Fine, then call it what, I'm sorry. Call it what you want.
The policy is the flag stays.
It's a protocol.
It's a protocol. Whatever you want. The flag is up, the flag is up, the flag is staying. And we also want to continue, which is what we said, getting our veterans' commitment, which is what I did by reaching out to the commander of the American Legion today.
Excuse me, but I would like an opportunity to see the policy and to be able to get feedback on the policy before the policy is enacted.
I, I agree, Paul.
You can't vote on this without bringing the community back.
I like that. I like that.
I just want to say, can I just say again? I spoke to Denny after you. I just want to say this again. His policy is that he wants the flag up there and stay up there. And that, that's the Legion policy. Where it is on the flagpole. I mean, you can wait for him to come back and tell you, but that's what he told me and that's the policy of Legion, Legion, and that's the final policy from him.
I have a question. Should that be the only flag on the flagpole? Are there other organizations or groups?
Yeah, it should be.
You're really saying this? You're really saying this?
Yeah.
Is it that this is all about to be given? And what other organization or flag people...
Excuse me, can I, excuse me, one, one conversation at a time, please.
Hi, my name's Brenda.
We really want to get it. We really want, this is very meaningful and as we know is very important, but we really need to listen to everybody and be able to have them be heard.
My name's Brenda Clavroth and you mentioned about other flags that have been asked to be flown. Uh, could you tell us what flags they are that you could consider that would be comparable and be appropriate to hang there?
Uh, I never mentioned any other flags.
I thought I even read...
He did, he did.
He just did. And Facebook and I, and I've read it.
I thought you were referring to our discussion.
The board too. I just heard your board members say it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Yes, right. So what other, what are the flags, would there be that would be, would be appropriate?
Well, that's actually a really good question because what happens if, I haven't had a request for another flag, but what happens if somebody else comes to us and says, we think, we would like to have our flag flown?
Well, what kind of one would be comparable that should be part of your policy?
So can I, I, I'd like to answer that question, if that's all right. That in order for any flag to fly beneath the American flag, it has to be congressionally approved. So if an organization, I don't know, make one up, comes forward, that flag would have to be congressionally approved before it could ever be flown on our flag staff.
That makes sense. So what other ones, so if you're saying the POW one may not be appropriate or there could be ones like that, you must know other ones that would be suitable or you wouldn't even be concerned? Or you would need a policy?
Brenda, we never said it was not appropriate.
But you were concerned and there were other flags, so...
What other flags have flown on that flagpole with the American flag and the POW flag? What other flag? He just said it. Mr. Lewis, he just said it. What other flag?
I, I, the answer is, I don't know. But if somebody comes to me and says, hey, I have a congressionally approved flag and I want to be able to put it up there, what's my response?
Then you did research and did not vote.
So that's what we're trying to work on here. It's like...
But you didn't work on that. You did it ahead of time. You did it without anybody's input.
Okay, well, just remember to make it to the town hall meeting too.
March on this issue.
Okay, carry it over to the town too.
I would just like to, to say something. Um, I know that I'm new here, so uh, and I'm wildly respectful of the people that have, that have been here. And I feel privileged to be able to be part of the board and serve the community. For what it's worth, my dad served in the Philippines, World War II. He's a veteran. Um, my dad passed away in 2001. Miss him every day. I see my dad in the faces in this audience. I would never want to offend my dad. I feel like I probably have.
You did. You just did.
I'm not afraid to say that we're sorry. I'm not afraid to say I'm sorry and that we'll do better.
Just one question as far as I'm concerned. How can you allow one individual to start this? One individual complaint. How can you let one single person start this?
Because she's politically influenced because she's a town board member.
Absolutely.
She's one of you?
She denied.
Come on. She's one of you that started this? Paul, come back up so we can address your concerns. But I will address you, and I think I already did address that, this question, right? That we did have the request. I stated what the request was. And if we don't know what it is, I bring it to the board and ask the board their opinion for discussion. And that was the discussion held by the board. Did we do it right? I already have said, no, we did not. I've admitted that. I've admitted that we should have left the flag while we continued to do our work. I stand by that. Right? We try, we work hard, we try to do our best. We got this one wrong. I've said that before. Right?
Well, any of you guys who has the guts to resign?
Please come forward if you want to talk because we don't know who's talking.
We have the guts to resign over this.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
We have the guts to resign over this.
I don't know what the, I don't know what to do.
Hey, I can't do all this work by myself.
We can certainly elect somebody better.
I just wanted to ask, the comment was made that you guys have learned your lessons moving forward. What lesson have you learned and moving forward have you planned on changing another time, a decision like this that should be a village meeting or a town meeting and make an emergency meeting? Hey, we have a decision. We want something temporary, meeting tomorrow night, da, 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 something definite in two weeks' time. Like, how do you, what do you change?
I think, I think actually, I think actually there is a really good listener. Uh, we move much too fast and we do not take input from people. So the first thing you do, doesn't need to be, none of this is an emergency. Shouldn't be, shouldn't have been done on a, nothing needs staffed on an emergency basis. But there should be, as with any of these things, a chance for people to come to the meeting and be heard and make their voices heard. We, yes, we screwed up on this one. We really did. Um, and in the future, I think next time there are these kind of um, uh, personal and very heartfelt issues come up, we're gonna have to obviously bring them forward and have, let people make more comments.
I only brought up the emergency situation was because a decision was made in two days. That's why I brought up an emergency meeting. You can have an emergency meeting in two days and make a temporary decision until something final.
First, first thing I like Mr. Cipperly's input.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Cipperly was mayor when I was growing up here.
I have the utmost respect for Mr. Cipperly and I've met with him on several occasions. And...
Very good friends.
Great mayor.
Yes, absolutely.
No doubt. Right? I've reached out to him for advice on several occasions. Right? His input was, think about the problem before you act. And I believe, I believe in that. And I think we, we, I learned my lesson.
My question just was, is just how you plan on moving forward so you don't disrupt a whole freaking town in media outrage and news outlets and discuss...
I think I answered the question. One is, we'll, we'll make it...
Does not make us look very good.
We can make it better informed decisions on what things we need to act on. That's the answer.
How you doing? Gary Kish, honorably discharged, United States military veteran. From the Post, fire chief, everybody must know me in here, most everybody. Um, one thing that you don't, guys probably don't realize, you know what this represents? It represents the guys that took care of fighting for this country and they're not here because if they didn't do that and all the veterans, you guys wouldn't be sitting here. Nobody would get here. We'd probably be working for some foreign country. So think about that. And that thing better stay up permanently. Thanks.
I've spoken about this before and I've always asked board members to please speak to people with more knowledge than you have. I'm sure you all have a specific task that you do on a daily basis for your job that you're very good at. But by not being a vet, you should have asked a vet. Now, the question that I've always asked the board is to ask people their opinion. So maybe you can learn from this lesson to ask more questions instead of voting on it without asking questions. Because there's a lot of issues in this village that you're making decisions on. And they're business decisions. And I've never seen anyone here in a business. Now, I could possibly be wrong, but there, there's a lot of decision making and there's a lot of questions could be asked. And I didn't think it was funny.
No, no, I, I mean, I, I...
I, I have a business.
I do have a business too. I'm sorry. I did not appreciate the business slate.
Yeah, we don't want to be, yeah, let's speak straight, let's be factual, that's all.
I, I said, I don't know what you do for your business. Okay? But what I'm trying to say is, you're not as good as you think you are.
No.
And, and this, this is, this is a fact. And everyone makes mistakes. Even Mr. Cipperly made mistakes, you know? But I'm telling you, you have... Not any that I know of, Peter. You have to ask more questions to each one of your objects that you're trying to make a decision about. Because it's very tricky to find out what section 21 dash 32 is and you're gonna vote on it next board meeting. I have no idea what that code is. You're just protecting yourself by putting that in the paper, that it was public knowledge, that you put it in the paper. You don't specifically spell it out and you don't tell people what's on the docket. And it's very, very important. We got from this position in our lives to this position. Hopefully you can take us to another level. But right now, it can't be done just with four or five guys. It's a community. And it really is important that there's more input. And I'm sorry, in your business, I don't, maybe it's in computers or something, but there's other businesses in this village that they've forgotten more than what you've learned. Some of the businessmen that I, that I admire and I mirror image. So I don't think it's funny at all. Any more questions?
One last thing. I can speak louder. I think everybody, and not just Rhinebeck, is so concerned about being politically correct that they're forgetting our past, our, our own...
History.
Our own history. And it's, like I said, it's not just Rhinebeck. But why do we have to join the rest of them? Why can't we, yes, go forward, but not to the extent of losing ourselves as we were, as we grew up, those of us who grew up here?
You came to Rhinebeck because you liked it.
Right. You don't, you don't change it. You don't change it too much. Because a lot of us are leaving.
And that's why I would be saying that. You can't afford to live here. As something as, I'm sure you may seem, think is my need about changing our mascot because somebody was a... somebody was offended. It was the Indians, the Rhinebeck Indians. It's been that way for, since day one, and somebody had to come in and say, I, I can't do that, that, that offends me. Let's take a vote, let's take a vote. Why? Why, why would, that's another one. Why would something like that need to be...
Changed.
Changed. It shouldn't even be an issue. Politically correct is going way too far, way too far.
All I got here is, I just want to thank all the veterans.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
I just want to thank all the veterans, servicemen and women who have fought for us.
Thank you all for your input. I really, we, I think as the board, appreciate that, and I think lessons have been learned, and we will do better and try to strive to serve people in, in a better fashion than what we did. Oh, one more, Ryan.
I'd like to thank the lady saying, everybody show up here. This gentleman here lost his brother in Nam, he's here, laws, half family who lost or served in this great country of ours. So let's keep going like we're going, and that turnout's fantastic, thank you everybody.
Keep Rhinebeck alive.
Thank you all, much appreciated.
I please everybody's attention please, we do have another speaker.
I, I just wanted to invite everybody, I'm doing my next monthly forum on the 29th of this month, I believe that's a Thursday, at 6 o'clock across the way at Rhinebeck Town Hall, and talking about, not just new economy stuff, but the heroin epidemic.
Joe, can you wait a second please? Excuse me, everybody, we appreciate your comment.
Was it my breath?
Sorry, Joe.
It's okay. I guess they weren't here to hear, to hear me. So, I just wanted to invite everybody, I'm doing my next in a series of monthly forums, it's going to be Thursday, the 29th of this month, at 6 o'clock, across the street at Town Hall, not just talking about new economy stuff, but the opiate epidemic, the heroin problem. And just in the last week or two, the Poughkeepsie Journal on the bottom of page three ran another big article about how it's actually gotten worse over the last couple of years. According to the most recent numbers, the number of people dying from opiate overdoses here in Dutchess County's actually gone up. And so, you know, a little over an hour north of us, there's a village called Chatham in Columbia County. And we've gotten to know Columbia County well, I drove all around it in 96 and 98, I'm a teacher assistant up at Hudson High School now, since last fall, and I'm, I'm asking everybody, anybody who might be watching, anybody who might still be in the room, to please, if we could try to take a lesson from Chatham, Columbia County, when it comes to the opiate epidemic. There's a, a guy named Peter Volkman, I believe is his name, he's the police chief of the village of Chatham. This is a community with only 4,000, 4,128 people, okay? So the Albany Times Union ran an article in April, 29th of last year, by a woman named Claire Hughes in the Albany Times Union, and it was all about, they have 22 part-time officers, they started something called Chatham Cares For You, year or two before that, and on April 29th, that was basically their 100th person who had shown up with heroin or opiates, they got them treatment. And I've been talking about this for a while, the first time I circulated a letter a few years ago, nobody would sign onto it in the county legislature. Then in the summer of 2016, just about everybody in my caucus signed onto it. I circulated another letter last month, I know everybody missed me last month, the February was weird, the county legislature was meeting at the exact same time, just so you know why I wasn't here. But it's something called the Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative, P-A-A-R-I. The website is P-A-A-R-I USA dot org. And it's just absolutely amazing, the police chief in Chatham, it's, it's open public knowledge, he's a recovering alcoholic, and he just saw too many people who were having opiate heroin problems, who were afraid to come forward, because they're afraid of doing time. And so, you know, he based his program on Gloucester, Massachusetts, which launched in, in 2015. Gloucester has 30,000 people, within a year, they got 400 people treatment, because they made sure to tell heroin addicts, people struggling with opiate issues, we're not going to arrest you, we're not going to put you in jail, we're going to make sure you get treatment. I've been talking about this for a few years, we need this here in Rhinebeck, we need it in Dutchess County, because there's 59 people who died of an opiate overdose just in 2016, and that's an increase from the year before. Because there's, every time I check, and I've been getting these numbers every month or two for the last few years, every time I check, there's 30, 40, 50, sometimes there's 60 people in the Dutchess County jail, all they've been charged with is nonviolent possession of a controlled substance, criminal, criminal possession of a controlled substance. They're not drug addicts, they're, they're, they're not violent or aggressive, they're not drug dealers, and they're costing us money. And until we bring these people out of the shadows, until we treat drug addiction as a disease and not a crime, we're not going to solve anything. And the University Albany School of Public Health has, has looked at this, and said it's the right thing to do, in Chatham, up in Columbia County, again, a community with 4,100 people, they have tons of volunteers, I can't do it alone. If the, if the county legislature isn't going to make it happen, I'm trying to make it happen in Clinton, I'm trying to make it happen in Rhinebeck, I'm trying to make it happen all over Dutchess County. And so, my cell phone number is 464-2245, my home number is 876-2488. We're spending too much, we're wasting, we're flushing money down the drain, incarcerating nonviolent drug addicts who shouldn't be incarcerated, and people are dying. And it's, and so I just, I just, I just bring that to you. And I'll be talking more about that, that's March 29th, 6 o'clock, Rhinebeck Town Hall. The state budget is about to wrap up, if you didn't know, there's been a 70% decrease over the last few decades, and how much money Albany shares with the counties and the cities and the towns and the villages, we need to return to progressive taxation. The Fiscal Policy Institute has the information, it's fiscalpolicy.org, there's a toll-free number to reach everybody in the Senate and the Assembly, that's 877-255-9417. The only other thing is, I wanted to, I don't have copies for everybody, but the last thing is, the, the other thing is, I learned a lot from the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, the Democracy Collaborative, and that organization called Local Progress. And last weekend, I was up in Saratoga Springs with a lot of the elected officials from all over the state, one of the, there's some of the innovative things that the Institute for Local Self-Reliance talks about is supermarket like Tops, going into the ground, going bankrupt, going down under, there are other places in the country where the community comes together to buy it. If you've been around here long enough, like I have, you remember, a few decades ago, you know, Fred Kilmer's IGA, and unfortunately, we couldn't save it, I go to CBS all the time, but we need to learn from other communities, state-of-the-art, best practice, cutting-edge stuff, and maybe we could save, because it's all been in the media about Tops might go under. We need a living wage, there's a lot of stuff we could do for working-class people in Dutchess County, this is the last thing I'll say, I launched Working Class Dutchess a year and a half ago, we need to make sure our representatives in government are sticking up for workers, because it's not happening. The minimum wage in Dutchess County is only going to be 12 and a half an hour by 2022. In Westchester and Long Island, it's going to be 15 an hour. It should be $15 an hour here in Dutchess County by 2022, and 20 bucks an hour nine, 10 years from now. There are other communities, if you look at that booklet, that are doing a Fair Work Week, that are ending wage theft, that have the paid sick leave, and the rest of it. The last thing I'll say, there's something called the Blue-Green Alliance. I've been an activist for a few decades, in the legislature for 15 years, I've seen over and over and over again, hard-working building trades union members fighting environmentalists. I've been organizing Labor Day rallies for over 20 years. Ha, I've been working on environmental issues. The beautiful thing about the Blue-Green Alliance, it takes the Sierra Club, it takes the steelworkers, it takes SEIU, it takes the Natural Resources Defense Council, it takes the unions and the environmentalists, and it puts them together and say, you know, we're not going to agree on everything, but let's strategize and talk and see if we can work on some stuff together. That needs to happen in Dutchess County, and County Legislature Giancarlo Laveras is working beyond that. Because until we, until, until we have that, frankly, we're going to have the Cricket Valley pollution, we're going to have the threat like we had a decade or so ago from St. Lawrence Cement, and Indian Point and the rest of it. There are a lot of green jobs, innovative things, that I'm not going to bore you with, so please check out blugreenalliance.org, and I see Dan Chapley there. Dan, I'm going to try to rope you in to be in a part of the Blue-Green Alliance, so thank you for...
Thank you, Mr. Tiner. All right, we have a series of presentations which we would, which are very important to us, and the first one is Dan Chapley, Director of Water Quality at River Keepers, who has been instrumental in working with the seven municipalities on pulling together the Source Water Protection Program and the, and the scorecard, which we recently announced, you know, and are going forward to forming an intermutual agreement between all of us to be able to move this project forward, correct, Dan?
That's right, yeah, thank you for the time to speak and, you know, discuss some, some things in the news earlier today, there's also very good news today on a subject very different, but one that you were active on recently, and that's the anchorages proposal that the industry, the shipping industry had proposed, as you know, a number of places on the Hudson where ships could anchor, and the, one of the big concerns about that was that it could dramatically increase the amount of crude oil, other hazardous substances that might be transported and stored in, in ships on the river. Today, the Coast Guard made a decision to indefinitely shelve that proposal, and there will be a continuation of the safety task force process that, that grew out of the, the controversy, but it was comments such as came from your board, and 10,000 residents up and down the valley that really turned that proposal around and showed the Coast Guard that that proposal from the industry was not welcome by the residents and the, those concerned about drinking water and other issues. So thank you, and it's some good news to share on the, on that issue. Very, something to clap for. So on the, the drink, and that is of course related to the drinking water issue in that when, and I have to give great credit to Gary as Mayor of Rhinebeck for bringing together that seven communities, because it was a conversation that he and I had early on that really highlighted that, that there was shared interest among the seven communities that draw water from the Hudson, but there wasn't a lot of information sharing, there wasn't a lot of collaboration going on, and the outreach to bring that group together came from Gary, so it was tremendous leadership on his part to bring that, to bring this group together that we're talking about. The goal, of course, is to focus on the Hudson as a shared resource for drinking water. Five drinking water plants draw water, including Rhinebeck's, and both the village and town benefit from that drinking water supply. The, the communities have been informally meeting for about seven, eight, nine months now. Some tangible things that have come out of that already are a single representative in that Coast Guard process to represent the communities on drinking water issues as the safety review's been going on. That's Randy Alstead, who's a resident of the village, but the operator of the Poughkeepsie Treatment Plant, so he's able to elevate the issue of drinking water during that process very effectively. Information sharing among the communities has been very effective and fruitful. Rhinebeck's really pioneering work on looking at the impacts of climate change, has been instructive to the other communities to learn from, so it's been great that you've been able to be recognized as a leader in that respect, and as, as other communities are looking at different treatment options, there's a lot of information sharing among the operators, so it's been really fruitful in that regard. There's, the other reasons that we set the goal of bringing the communities together were to collaborate on grants for infrastructure, there's a lot more money in the state budget thanks to advocacy on our part and others to get more money for water infrastructure into the state budget. There's special category of grants for intermunicipal cooperation, so we think by having the communities work together, you'll be able to be in a really good position to get some of that money for some of the projects such as the lagoon that's come up, that's been a hard thing to fund locally, that, that you want to get some help on. And, and that's actually another example where the intermunicipal cooperation has yielded some results on technical advice, where Randy was able to provide some, some extra technical assistance to the village in considering options. But what you have before you is the other aspect of the collaboration, that's a formal intermunicipal council that is recommended by the report that, that we commissioned, Riverkeeper commissioned, thanks to funding from the Park Foundation, in order to really outline what, what are some next steps these communities can take together to focus on protecting the Hudson in the long term as a drinking water source. And the, the main, you know, to categorize them, you have a report in your packets, I believe, that you can take a closer look at, at, at your leisure, but the, the goals of, or the, the main recommendations are to form an intermunicipal council so that you can make those grant applications and do other decision-making as a group. To start to develop a source water protection program in collaboration with the state, and there's new state money available for that, that'll be available over the next several years, so the time is really ripe to do that and get, get those resources brought into our, to locally, to help with planning and implementation. And, and really to, to, sorry, and, and to formally request of the state a new drinking, what's called a source water assessment, and this is a, a formal document under the Safe Drinking Water Act that looks at potential risks to the drinking water supply and what, what can be done about them. And the assessment that's on the books for these water supplies is 15 years old, relies on data that's 25 years old, doesn't contemplate risks such as crude oil transport, so it's really in need of an update, and the time is right to ask for that. So, there's some tangible next steps that the council can ask for, but the first step is really looking at that memorandum of agreement that has been drafted, that each town and village and city in, that's in this collaborative would consider, and to formally adopt it as a, an act of this body so that you can join that intermunicipal council. So that's the basic overview, I hope I haven't gone on too long, I'm happy to answer any questions or help to navigate any, any questions you have about it, but I hope you will vote on it when the time is right and join the council.
Thank you, Dan. Has any of the other municipalities voted on the memorandum of agreement yet?
I know the town of Poughkeepsie had a vote scheduled that was, that they were expecting to approve, and that was delayed by one of the storms. I gave a presentation of the town of Asopis and saw an informal, you know, sort of agreement come forward, but they haven't formally voted. And I'm, I know Hyde Park has considered it at a workshop and expressed unanimous support, but I don't think their formal vote has taken place. I'm not, I'm not sure where the city of Poughkeepsie is at with its process.
And when is our next meeting for the Source Water Protection Group?
I don't think we have, I don't think we've put it on the calendar yet.
Okay.
But we're hoping that in, in, if there's no, if there hasn't been any opposition to the project to date, but you know, assuming there is none and these resolutions get passed, then we would hope to have another announcement by April of the intermunicipal agreement forming, which would be in time for some of the applications to the state for grant funding that typically come around in June, so there's enough time to sort of get geared up for those.
Very good, so thank you for working on all this, very you and Rebecca as well.
Yes, I'll pass that on to her.
I cannot thank you both enough for really being the engine behind getting all of this done in a very short period, and getting us to a point where we have an IME that we can now review and, and forego and forward with.
Well, I can say from my perspective, one, I'm, I'm a resident of the community, the greater Rhinebeck community, I live in the town, but I've, I've lived in Poughkeepsie, I've lived in Highland, I've, I lived in Fort Ewen for eight years, these are all communities that draw their water from the Hudson, so it's a very, it's a professional interest, obviously, is that my job is to try and protect water flow on the Hudson, but it's personal, this is my water, my neighbor's water, my family's water, so appreciate your, your work.
Very good, thank you. So we will put this on the agenda, we will put this on the agenda... So we will put this on the agenda, we will put this on the agenda for our next month, next meeting to establish a vote for.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, and I also think that the announcement that you made today about the anchorage does show that change, change does happen and that these things do make a difference. It's an incremental change, but, or we, we can move in increments, but sometimes there are big impacts.
Yeah, I'll, well, I'll pontificate for one moment just to say that, you know, Riverkeeper is about 50 years old and it started actually with a group of veterans down in, in Croton Falls. It was a BMW law meeting and guys got together and said they were sick of the pollution in the Hudson. And that's what spawned Riverkeeper was, you know, just a group of people coming together wishing to act on it. And I've often thought of the parallels of, of this group of municipalities coming together. This, this will be, this group will be together decades to come. And whether Riverkeeper is around in another 50 years, I hope we are. But if we're not needed because you're doing the work, all the better, you know. You'll, you'll be betterized and watchdogs for the water because it's your drinking water than anyone else's. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is another environmental topic that we've been taking under and I introduced to the board last month, which was basically focused on our food waste reduction program. And one of our, one of our committee members, which is Matt Stinchcomb, has been leading this effort in terms of bringing this information forward. And it, it's really time to now start sharing this information with a broader audience.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for having me here tonight. I have some data just about food waste in general, and I'll talk about it on a global level and then bring it right into Rhinebeck and look at what the opportunity is. But about one-third of all the food that's produced in the world, it's about 1.4 billion tons, never actually makes it to people. So it's lost in transport or it's wasted because people buy it and don't consume it and it goes rotten. At the same time, there's more than 800 million chronically hungry people in the world. So there's a major disconnect here. At the same time, wasted food contributes 4.4 gigatons of carbon dioxide equivalent into the atmosphere each year. So if food waste were a country, it would be the third largest emitter of greenhouse gases. So it's China, the United States and food waste. And that's just wasted food in terms of all the embedded carbon costs that go into making it. The water used to grow just the food that we waste is greater than the water used by any single nation. And the annual cost of food lost in waste is estimated to be over $411 billion a year. So in the United States, Americans waste about 39% of their food, or about 143 billion pounds of food annually. And averaged out, the average American throws away around 300 pounds of food each year. So for Rhinebeck, just using the numbers that were in the last census, 7,548 people equals 1,026,528 kilograms of wasted food annually. And I use kilograms here because that's how carbon is typically calculated, which equals 600,415,800,000 kilograms of CO2 emissions just in Rhinebeck alone from the food that's wasted. So to put that into more tangible equivalents, that'd be like taking 1,258 cars off the road in Rhinebeck each year. It's the energy use of an average house for 49 years. It's, it could power a television for 4,386 years. And it could power one of these lights for 56,338 years.
It's LED.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's the thing. It's a compact fluorescent actually. So maybe these are not bad. But at the same time, there's 41 million people struggling with hunger in the United States. In the Hudson Valley, across Dutchess, Orange, Putnam and Ulster Counties, one in 10 people receive Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program or SNAP. So basically there, even for people who aren't eligible for SNAP, the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley did a study and said that there's many more who are considered food insecure, meaning they do not have easy and regular access to quality food and may frequently go hungry. So to me, there's a real opportunity both to meaningfully address our impact from a climatic point of view, but also to save community members money and get food to people that wouldn't have it otherwise. So the Environmental Committee has been exploring how we might want to approach food waste for the village and town of Rhinebeck. And it's our recommendation that we move forward with bringing on a graduate intern from the Center for Environmental Policy at Bard. They have to do an eight-month practicum as part of their graduate degree. These are very competent people. And what we want to propose is working with this intern to develop a comprehensive plan that addresses both food loss, meaning the food that never makes it to consumers and food waste. So you think about all the restaurants here, you think about the schools, the hospital, how much food is being wasted there at the same time while there's all these people going hungry. So looking at where interventions might be made and then exploring for the food that we can't prevent from being wasted, how are we then processing or handling that waste? So we think there's a real opportunity to explore composting in the village, given the density of, of residents. And so what we're proposing today is that we move forward with this intern. Independently, I've secured a grant that could provide a stipend for this intern. So it wouldn't cost the village any money. All we're asking for is a part-time seat somewhere in Village Hall where this person can be housed while they're working on this project. So I think that's everything for now. So any questions?
Who would be in charge of that intern?
I, I, I would be as an environmental committee member. So we were thinking about creating a subcommittee specifically to focus on food waste that I'm guessing would be open to other people too. But, you know, I don't have the, the capacity, just given my work and family, to do this alone. So having someone who has specific expertise in this and needs to work on a project for school seemed like a perfect fit. It's interesting too, because I think that it's a, it's a particularly interesting area because it impacts so many different things. I think a lot of it is about education, so educating consumers. And then a lot of it is about how do we work with municipalities to see other policies that could be implemented to actually support food waste reduction strategies? Oh, the other thing I should mention that is important is there is state funding for this. There's grants available specifically for food waste initiatives. So we would imagine that part of our plan that we would put forward would be including the request for funding from the state for these initiatives. Yeah, so it would be some subgroup of the Environmental Committee working with a graduate student.
Do you have a candidate in mind?
We do. So I've been speaking with a student there. Monique Segarra, who's a professor at Bard, who's also on the Environmental Committee, speaks very highly of him. I met with him. He's definitely interested. But that's why we figured we would just surface this information now before we move forward with anything.
Can we know a few more of the details just from a practical standpoint? How many hours, how many days?
That's what we're still working out, but I think it would probably be, you know, around three to four days a week of working on this. They're not taking classes during that time, so this is their primary focus while they're doing this internship. The internship would run from June, it could go as long as January. And so, yeah, that would, we would need to work that out with the student.
And besides having a logistical seat, chair, desk, and other telecommunications needs, phone, internet connection, laptop?
I mean, the student does have his own laptop. I think using the wifi here would be what we would hope for. I mean, I think that if this weren't something for which you all were amenable, there's other options for him, but we thought it would actually be really important to have him seated here and around and actively involved in, in village government.
We, we felt it was anybody who took on this task to be, feel part of a larger group to refer to what they're working with and working for to be able to make, to make it happen, which is why we don't have a lot of space, but we have space. And so, and what I've discussed is we really have that spare desk in Pat's office that could be used on this three-day-a-week kind of thing. And the students know that there has to be some flexibility within their time. So if things interfere with that, they could relocate to another part of the building up here temporarily or whatever, because they really are working and we, we would have that focus for them to be able to interact with people plus while driving and feel part of an organization.
Obviously they have access to the wifi up here.
Yes.
And, and I also imagine that this person will not always be sitting here though. To do this effectively, you need to be having lots of meetings throughout the community with, you know, people who are responsible for food purchasing at the hospital or whatever.
Matt, one thing, I don't know if you mentioned, if I missed it or not, but part of the internship would be to also have a pilot program?
Yeah, that's right. So our hope is to pilot a composting program, the details of which are still to be determined. It'd be part of the scope of this internship to design that, design that pilot and then implement that pilot. We have met with an organization called Community Compost Company to learn more about municipal compost collection. You know, I don't think we're yet ready to say specifically how to best move forward with that other than that we would like a composting project to be part of this engagement.
I guess my other question was one sort of a detailed job subscription, description, excuse me, for that person? And also, are they going to be representing the village? And if so, does that, is there any concern? How are they going to, they're going to approach some of the local businesses? It's under what auspices or how is that handled?
Well, it is a joint committee between the village and the town. So they would be representing both municipalities as part of forming, doing the internship and then creating also the pilot, the pilot program. In terms of, you know, representing the village, what they need from us is the ability to say yes or no to be able to establish the internship. Right? So is it a representation? It is really an internship. And the internship's job is to come up with this program, a development program. So we can't define it ahead of time because that's what their job is to do.
So their job is to define the program, right?
Right.
Okay. But they're going to be up and about in the community there, so you're talking to people.
Absolutely. Yeah, and they would represent themselves as doing an internship for the Environmental Committee, which is a joint town, village and town.
Okay.
That's really their association. We are providing, if approved, and you guys agree, we would provide a facility to be able, for them to work out of. The college encourages people not to stay on campus to do this. The college encourages people to get out into the real world, become part of the real world and really survive while you're doing this internship. That's the, that's the goal. It's, it's a growth period for, for this intern as well.
One thing I didn't maybe mention clearly enough too is that the Community Foundation launched an initiative called Feed HV. So they've developed an app and I, I think this program is moving into a different nonprofit organization in Hudson Valley, but looking at getting food from restaurants, from farms, directly to food pantries and to other programs that are feeding hungry people in the Hudson Valley. So I think it's not just looking at the waste, it's also looking at food that would be waste and making sure that it's not going to waste.
And there's no cost to the village, right?
That's right.
Except for us to do the housing.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Wifi.
Yeah, the table over there.
Whatever.
The wifi is here.
Whatever the per capita cost of wifi.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Which gets cheaper.
We can give you some water soon.
We, we can set up a desk anywhere. We have a desk here that we could make whatever. But it's really, it's, the board has to decide if they want to support this, you know, and support the internship and trying to develop this program. Because it isn't, it is something we would like to, as an environmental committee, would like to get started as soon as possible before the interns get involved into another program. And so we felt that the time is now to be able to make this request.
I think the committee has articulated it well, as Howie has said, not going to cost us anything. I think I heard the person would actually be working on additional grants possibly as well. So I don't know why we wouldn't support the committee desire to bring on this individual. Did you make a motion?
Yeah. Any other discussion? So I would like to make the motion that in support of the Environmental Committee, we host a food waste reduction intern at the village of Rhinebeck to complete the internship for the purpose of developing a program along with the pilot program for the village and town of Rhinebeck.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, staying? All right, very good. Move forward. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
We have the composting element at the down. Pilot program.
I believe that all has to be determined, but I believe there's room for everybody to participate in this one. Right? I don't believe we have the physical space to put in a program that we would, that we would need to make it happen here within the village.
There, there is, just for what it's worth, you know, there are options even where there's household pickup of compost and it's taken to compost. So just like garbage collection.
Right. Very good. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda. Trustee Trout has been working with Crawford and Associates on a community development block grant that we received for $100,000 from the county. And I believe this is our first chance of looking at, at the proposal, correct?
Yes. This is Ryan.
Yeah, my name is Ryan. I'm a Crawford and Associates engineer. I'm here to talk briefly about the Leaky Park project. I'm not sure how familiar you are, so I need to briefly overview the project. Luke Rhinebeck has been awarded the Beadwell Block Grant, listed for $100,000. This project is going to work on improving the handicap accessibility of the park and also doing a couple of things, especially including a dock and some parking. This project is currently looking to install a pathway with a couple of stocking spaces, a railing along the edge of the waterline as well as a new fishing dock. Part of the project will involve some of the village labor force. So I know some things have been already started by the DPW staff. So I was out there today and there is a fence that's been installed. I also provided a few visual ideas of what we can do. The column on the left is more of the generic ideas. The column on the right is more of an elaborate idea depending on funding. How this project would work is as soon as we did. It'd probably been in early spring, summertime when we construct end of summer to the fall. This grant goes until October 31st and can linger on a little bit longer, but it has to be completed by January 1st of 2019. So this project is going to be completed this, this year. Some of the options that we were talking about for additional things, we get into the docks, different kinds of railings, the surfaces for this pathway. It's currently, listen, it's a stone dust pathway, which is just crushed stones impacted as a nice surface. Other ideas would be concrete, some of the things for the dock, we've shown aluminum dock, it's just a generic casting dock, you know, wooden dock, do other things that would be a little more expensive. But again, it would just be depending on how the bids come in and how the village would follow with those bids. That's the project in a nutshell. Any questions, comments?
I just want to comment that this was, this was developed from previous mayor Tortorella. He had a committee that they formed and they came up with this plan. And this is what they came up with and this was what they applied to the county for. So this is kind of what we have to go with. We can have a couple minor alterations, right?
Yes.
If, if we maybe have some money that we think we might have left over or because some of the work has already been done. We, Ryan and I talked about, as he said, it's a stone dust path now, but if we wanted to make it concrete, we might have some money to make it concrete if we do so choose. But my question to you is, when is that decided? When we get the bids in or?
In reality, yes, that would be the best time to make the decisions. How we have set up the bid so far was this has to be approved by Dutchess County prior to bidding it. But how we have it set up now is there's going to be your base bid to do everything you see here as it's shown. But then we'd also offer alternates such as a concrete pathway, you know, if you like a different type of railing. I know there's a split rail fence out there currently. I didn't know that when I was preparing this, otherwise I would probably provide a video of a split rail. But we could always modify that to be a split rail or, you know, adding additional fencing is not going to cost anything. One, and it's just another specification to call out. And you can get prices for those things as well. And when it comes into bid, you could go through the options of, okay, we're expecting product to be X and we have, you know, a little bit left over, we could always increase things and change things around.
Ryan, I know one of the comments that I've received, and maybe we have a member of the Highway Department here and also our DPW, I don't know if they've seen, have heard the same response, but the existing fence that up there is making it difficult to plow. I don't know if you guys have any, I mean, I've heard these comments. I don't know if they're reality. You guys are doing it. Is, is there any comment in regard to the placement of the existing fence?
It's just almost impossible for people that have gone up there with boat trailers to, to turn around. For us, it's back and forth with a truck and plow.
Yeah, we anticipated on, on moving that one section that's on that angle. We were directed by the previous administration to basically install it the way it is now. But to, for us to move that whole section would not be an issue. And we're talking maybe 10 posts and, you know, we could, we could move it any which way. Uh, we also realized that this plan still needed to get approved. So we kind of had the notion that we might be moving this thing anyway. So it was just something that we had to put up while we had the material. And it was in agreement with the village and the neighbor with the fencing. And we were able to get the fencing at a very cheap price and so on, so.
So is that something we could take into consideration to help facilitate our DPW and our other people who want to use it?
Absolutely, yeah. We can definitely adjust.
Thank you.
Our surveyor, I'm not sure if he's been out there yet, I know the snow has been a little bit of an issue for him to get. But he's going to go out there and pick up any existing fence lines, water line, trees, surfaces so that we can make sure that we're including the correct information on this drawing. I know we showed that there's some restoration work after speaking with John previously. It looks like they've already done that work. So there was a part of the grant that would be a village force account work, which would be village labor paying for some of the materials that would be completed for this project. So that stuff was previously, so, or completed, is that correct?
Yes.
So that part has already been done. So these things in here, which we actually called out as costs in our, our estimates are now going to be revised slightly. So there may be additional things that we can do in the following project.
Couple of questions?
Sure.
Benches?
We were working that in with the county and I didn't get a chance to get, I didn't hear back about if benches were going to be included under the grant because of how it's an ADA improvement. Um, the stopping paths were included. We can add things, they just may not be included in the grant. I know I did a project in Tivoli where we installed benches last year and they weren't very pricey. So we could always work those in later if we feel like it. Try to reach back up to Dutchess County and discuss the possibility of adding benches as well.
And the dock, is that something that it's going to have to be pulled out seasonally?
That's how it was, that's how it was intended. And that was one of the other questions that came up. Was part of our estimate did include for the contractor to install the dock. Is that something the DPW staff, well, they could handle because they're going to have to take it out seasonally anyways. If there was something they did on their own, that would also be a reduced cost in the construction aspect as well. Um, that was something we were going to move forward to discuss as that progressed through. I was waiting for a cost back from the dock. They haven't gotten back to me yet on the new costs.
And my last question is, a permeable surface up in the handicap zone of asphalt up there that I know the water is brushing down there. Any chance of doing some sort of permeable surface up on the top of that hill or?
Um, for the entire area or just the parking?
The park, from the parking.
Uh, the park, we can, we can do something like that. It would be a little more costly. I mean, now that there have been some things that have been changed, I can look into a cost for that. Um, the cost of, of this amount of material to get some type of permeable pavement is going to be about the same as what you're probably to get normal asphalt. But again, permeable asphalt has a maintenance problem with it. You have to go out there and vacuum out the surface, otherwise the pores get filled with materials and things like that. So there is a, there is a future maintenance cost that comes up with porous pavement. There are other kinds of surfaces that are porous as well that we can, I can try to see whether anything that could fit into that as well.
Can you brush it?
Uh, I'm not sure if it's a brush. I've actually never seen how they actually treat it. But I know that there is a maintenance cost that a lot of times people don't understand whether they think it just goes in and then it stays, but there is a maintenance.
Yeah.
We have a vac, we have a street vacuum.
Yeah, a lot of that, a lot of that maintenance cost could be absorbed by the highway department.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have a, I think we have the tools, Ryan.
Okay.
So I just want to ask one more question, one question, but also, the dock?
Yes.
It has to be a floating dock? I mean, a floating ramp, uh, the, so the ramp and the dock are all, are going to be both pulled out?
Yes.
At the end of the season?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe the village would rather leave it in place, so we can work on something like that. I just told them the floating dock was going to be, it'll be a little bit cheaper because you don't have to put any foundation things that are going to make sure to move in the winter time.
Right.
With the ice. I'm not sure how that, there it freezes, if it freezes up solid or if it doesn't. So I know those are some of the things we have to worry about.
It freezes up solid.
Yeah.
I mean, we have the means to remove it. We have a flat bed and we could, well, we could take it down to the ivory garage and stage it there. It's just two pieces.
Yeah.
You know, so it really wouldn't be a big issue.
It could be staged on site too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Or if the cost allows, permanent.
Right.
Well, you could get a nice, you know, you could get a nice one if the cost allows.
Right.
Right.
I would like to see both options because if it could be permanent, have people go out and, you know, have handicap access even in the winter time to get out over in the ice, I think it was a great thing.
Yeah, they could go skating permanent.
So I wanted to invite Ryan in just to give everybody an update and, because we're, we do have a time limit here, so.
Yeah. Is there anything you need from us, Howie, to move forward?
I don't think so, do we?
No.
No, because it's all been approved by the county. The engineering costs have been approved. You spoke with Audra Murray?
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
This person I spoke to. I sent you the email where she approved it. So your next, your next thing is to go out for bid?
Uh, we're working right now on getting all the manufacturer's specifications, like I said, for the dock, for the railing. We're putting our bid packets together, then it'll go to the county for their approval. Once we get their approval from the county, we'll send everything out to bid. And once we get that, usually do about three week bid process. So we'll have a three bid meeting, a bid for two weeks, we'll have a bid opening. It'll probably be here in the village hall. And then we'll do the review of the bids and probably have another meeting some of this. And just go over the bids and discuss how things came in.
That bid package will come to us though, right?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
To review.
Yep.
Do you get a chance to have input before the bids go out?
Well, that's why I just asked. So that bid package that he's developing will come to us to comment on a review.
Oh, before it goes out?
Before it goes out.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, misunderstood your question.
So when do you think that'll be ready? I'm just, I'm not trying to push you, but you know.
How, how soon?
Supposed to be done by October, this whole thing, right? Maybe, maybe January, but.
Um, I think we'll have something ready as soon as I can hear back from the manufacturers. I'm, I'm going to give another call. I give a call every couple of days. Try to get specifications for dock and for the other items. And I'll try to look up a couple of our alternatives we could throw in there as well and discuss this evening. Hopefully by the end of, maybe by the end of this month, we can have a bid package. We have the meat potatoes that are just going in the small little things.
Right.
So we could, we could review this in our next meeting and move forward.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah.
Another month from now.
Just, just one real fast thing.
Yes.
Ryan, you, you said that the items on the left are what we would be doing unless we could find a few extra dollars and sort of everything on the right.
Right.
This is really, it looks terrific. The only thing that I hope that we could do, whether it be permanent or not, is that aluminum floating dock just, just doesn't go with the character of the.
Yeah, so if we have, yeah, it looks a little like something you'd see in front of a lake house.
Be awfully hot in summer too.
So you're saying the right side, the right, the right picture is, is?
Well, just think of yourself as you're a handicapped person trying to get out on a floating dock.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, to me, is a, sorry.
That's the only thing. A aluminum dock would be easier for us to make, you know, to move it.
Right.
It, it looks like that other dock isn't going anywhere. Yeah, just the weight of it and the manpower you need to move it.
Very good.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right, next on agenda is public comment. Is there anybody here that still would like to participate in public comment?
Can I just, can we, can we get Liz up before, otherwise she's got to wait till the end of the meeting?
Oh.
She's been very patient.
I don't mind.
Yeah.
Don't mind at all.
Please.
Unless you want to stay, Liz, and watch the whole meeting.
Liz Mazzarella, I'm here to talk about Porch Fest. I would like to thank you all for what you do. I can truly appreciate it. It's a difficult job. And I just hope people can respect that you're here doing the best that you can. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm here regarding Porch Fest. I sent in the event application in December. Um, we're looking to do the music festival again in Rhinebeck September 29th. Uh, we're moving it, we'd like to move it back to a Saturday this year. Sunday became a little complicated because of churches being in session and blocking streets and the feedback I've been getting is that Saturday was a better day for this type of event, that people felt they could really enjoy it because they had to get up and go to work the next day. So my hope is we could move it back to Saturday, September 29th. Uh, we've also tried to take into consideration other events that are going on in the area, such as Hardscrabble Day and Red Hook, so we're not competing with them. And they were very supportive of us last year. The event, I met with Sergeant Dunn to go over safety issues. And we talked about this year, you know, we have to be a little more diligent regarding blocking the streets. Um, I know that Andy Imperato's bought doors, these cement barriers to block the streets to create a safer haven during this event. So I'm going to be talking to him and seeing if we could utilize those on that day as well. Uh, we talked about being a little more efficient regarding parking, having more signs, more people directing people, you know, cars to the appropriate lots at the fairgrounds. Andy gave us two lots last year and they were barely used. And there was some congestion issues on the streets. And I've talked to a lot of people and I don't really, I want to keep this small. I don't want it to become this big. I want it to be a community event. Um, I think it's important, the whole idea is to have local musicians showcasing their talents and having a, a day of uplifting music and community spirit. Um, it's free to everyone. Um, the one change I thought would be nice this year is I put in the addendum that at the end of the event, once the porches have shut down around 5:30, the streets are opened up and there'll be a large free event in the municipal lot as Sinnerclaw's does. Um, this is, the main reason I feel that this will be beneficial is I've heard from restaurants and shops that we're, you know, Saturday is a big day for them. And I feel this is a good way, if we talk to them about the event, that this will pull people back into the village after the porches have shut down. We can encourage shop owners to stay open later those nights, to pull people back into their shops. Um, you know, frequent the restaurants, attend the restaurants. And, you know, we're trying to make everybody happy. I know it's not possible, but.
And how long would the event in the municipal parking lot last?
An hour.
For public?
An hour.
Yes.
Just an hour.
I want to make, this, that was the important part, that I wanted to make sure that the board knew, you know, between the close down of five, at 5:30 to allow the street vendors to leave.
Right.
And then between six and seven, you will be starting the event here, is that correct?
It'll end at seven, yes. It'll be an hour event. We're still not sure. We're trying to get either some well-known local talent. Uh, we still haven't, you know, put that into place until we get approval, but. And we're, we realize that's going to take a little more manpower to kind of, you know, orchestrate that at the end of the day. And we, you know, our committee is growing. We're, we're trying to get more help. Um, it takes a lot to pull this off. So I'm just here seeking approval to go forward.
Pete, our sergeant, has signed off on everything, which we reviewed at our last meeting. Um, I know, Liz, you mentioned the cement barriers. I call them Jersey barriers. I also met with Andy Imperato and he says he will make them available.
Oh, great.
To be used.
Great.
Um, they do weigh 3,000 pounds, so there is a, we have to figure out whether we can lift them ourselves with putting some sort of lift mechanism on a bobcat or a backhoe to move them so that they can be, you know, effectively then put in place. But he will check in to see, he thought the number was six to make sure. And he said that if we need them, he would make them available for you.
Great.
To use. We just have to figure out the logistics of.
Of how to get them in place.
Whether, and he would also lend us the equipment if we didn't to be able to do that. But we'd have to work out those logistics with them.
Okay, great.
That was very nice of him to.
The fire department wanted to make sure that the public safety vehicles could get, could zigzag through the.
Yeah.
So.
They would be, they would be on a staggered thing, just like there was be for the fairgrounds when they set them up for the, behind the grandstand last year. If you went in through that entrance into the fair where these barriers were staggered. So you can't do a head-on into the, into a crowd. If you're going to go into a crowd, you have to physically do one of these, but we have to allow for emergency access to get through these. It, it's a, it's a state of affair where we're at right now, where we can put up our wooden cross signs, but if somebody really wanted to drive into this event, we could not stop that from happening.
Yeah, I did talk.
It was very nice of Andy to, you know, to want to investigate that and give us a final count. So I believe we can work something out to make that.
Great. I'll reach out to him. I was waiting just to get the final okay. Um, and I did talk to Sergeant Dunn about, you know, we're going to have more of a police presence for safety issues this year.
I will say that Porch Fest has been very supportive in our police and making a donation for the effort. And so I thank you for that, because not many organizations do. But it's very much appreciated, given the effort that, you know, we, everybody puts into hosting these events. So thank you for that.
Oh, I appreciate it. Yeah. We gave, um, I'm sure you know that $10,000 was given to the Rhinebeck Community Park as well.
Yes.
Um, and that's, we're hoping for more this year.
Cool, thank you. So is there any discussion needed, but I would like to maybe make sure that we just close on this final and move forward for having Porch Fest on September 29th.
Uh, Mayor, Sergeant Dunn was okay with 7:00 PM? For some reason I had in my mind that he was looking to wrap up a little earlier.
These, the porches would end at 5:30.
Okay.
So that the streets could then open up.
By six.
And then, and then the, the next performance would be in the village municipal lot at six to seven.
Okay.
So there's like that.
You're right, that's what it was. Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion, you know, a final motion for, to support the Porch Fest 2018 on September 29th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, staying? Enjoy vacation tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda, I, as everybody's well aware, we've been hit with back-to-back nor'easters in the past couple of weeks that have dumped, you know, the equivalent of two feet of snow on, on our village and have knocked down power lines and trees onto our lawns or streets. And not only has power been knocked out once, but knocked out twice for many of our, many of our residents. And I just wanted to let everybody know that behind the scenes, there was a lot of activity going on to make sure that, you know, we were looking after the best interest of everybody in the village. Because each storm brought its own set of issues and the biggest one was the loss of power. Um, I don't know if anybody here on the board lost power, but we had quite a few residents in the village that lost power. So this was a huge public safety issue for us. And we were working non-stop on getting the power restored. And I'm going to read this, if everybody doesn't mind, as quickly as possible. "In the meantime, while this is in operation, both our police, our fire and our EMS, emergency services were standing by at the firehouse at all times in order to make sure that we could deal quickly with any emergencies. Our crews from the village, joined with our crews from the town of the high, uh, town highway department, kept our roads open. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, John." You know, well done, all right, in terms of that. So that if the emergency was needed, our V, our emergency vehicles could get to where they needed to do in, in a very quick fashion. And behind the scene, we were working very hard with our county executive, Mark Molinaro, who is getting us the county assistance, as well as putting continuous pressure on our utility providers. Right? If you're out for power for a short period of time, I think you know, whether it's 45 minutes or four hours or four days, it's very distressful. And I know Tom was out for several days during, during the storm as well. We were also in contact with the governor's office and we had a direct line that was set up by the county to an emergency operations center where we could directly report allergies, road closures and power lines down 24/7 to be able to facilitate getting the information and then if we needed support, get that support as needed. So we were working continuously around the clock through both storms. Even to the fact that one of our water operators spent a night at the plant. Thank you, Brayham.
Anthony Valenti.
Yes, for fear because our pumps start at 3:00 AM and he was worried that he would not be able to get in due to the predicted snowstorm and get, be able to get in at 3:00 AM to start the pumps. So even though there was offers for him to stay at other establishments, he chose to sleep at the plant. So telling Anthony, thank you very much for his, his dedication as well, for doing that. But we are constantly in contact with each other throughout the storm, keeping everybody in the loop and to be able to respond, respond to the problems as they were discovered. So I am very thankful to this team of people who are dedicated to do whatever was needed, right? And I'm also thankful to all of the residents of Rhinebeck who helped us and who also helped their neighbors and made it through these, these very difficult storms. And I know that in some cases, it felt like it was an eternity to get these, get power restored. But you have my commitment that you were never forgotten. To communicate with people, I ended up taking to the streets and going door to door, making sure people were safe. Looking ahead, I really believe we must establish a better communication plan. As hard as we tried, not everybody was able to get the message all the time for these types. type of storms when there's power outages. And what, one important thing that many people were not aware is that we were able to open a village hall at any time and welcome people in to use our kitchen, use our facilities, charge your cellphones, or go online if our air that was up, which was an issue some, some of the time. And we will make a, I want to make a point for going forward for these type of storms, we're getting this information better out to the community, to the community at large. But my thanks goes to everybody that helped us get through the storm and their dedication and our staff for being able to facilitate and restore our roads and trees that were down. So thank you. All right, department reports. First one is our treasurer's report.
Sorry about that. Okay, the treasurer's report is for the period ending February 28. The tax collectors' account ended the month with $1,025,902.47. The general fund ended the month with $214,737,082. The water fund ended the month with $793,426.83. And the sewer fund ended the month with $795,403.23. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund, total $87,654.74. In the water fund, $34,064.03. In the sewer fund, $29,854.44. We have a payment, a capital payment for the new highway truck of $180,939. And we have a capital, in the capital fund, we have a payment for the engineers for the 2017 block grant for $3,140.50. An operating statement is provided with expenditures through March 13th. That was downloaded in the cloud and it's also available at the village hall. The water and sewer adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the water liaison and just to report that there were no adjustments for the wastewater this month, and those are presented for the board's authorization. The, do you want me to go through everything, or you want to do...
Well, we can stop and, and if we're done with water and wastewater, I'd like to make a motion to have both the water and the wastewater adjustments, although no adjustments for wastewater approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Carry?
All right, and we have some budget amendments. In the, we have a, actually a transfer to, in the, from the capital, from the general cash of the $3,140.50 for the community block grant that we, put that money out and it's reimbursed by the county, so. Budget amendments in the general fund. I'm requesting an increase in the 16202 building equipment fund for $2,611, or 200, $2,611 with a decrease from the 1990 contingency fund, and that is for the new time clock that we had put in. An increase in 16404, which is the central garage contractual expense of $6,395, with also a decrease to contingency, and that is for the SafeCo alarm system. I'm also looking to decrease the building's equipment for $500 and transfer that to the garage for, over budget line item for 164004 in the amount of $500. In the water fund, I'm looking to decrease the 1420 attorney line item and increase the 8320 source power equipment of $2,780 for the SafeCo alarm system. Also decreasing the 1440 engineer line item that has not been used yet by $3,000 and increase the 83404 for the transmission, distribution, repair, and maintenance for some services that we use for our water main breaks. In the sewer fund, I'm looking to decrease the line item 99509, which is our transfer to capital, and increase the expense line item of 813004 for the sewer repair and maintenance by the amount of $10,0960, and that would be to cover the UV upgrade and repair that was just done.
I'd like to, any, any discussion on the adjustments? I'd like to make a motion, we accept the adjustments as noted by our treasurer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Carry?
Okay, my next item is the FEMA for Blizzard Stella, which happened last year around this time. I just wanted to report that the paperwork has been complete and that reimbursement has been submitted.
Thank you.
So we will see how that goes.
I'd just like to make note of that, that I don't think anybody realizes how many hours of effort between collecting data, working with our superintendent of Public Works and our treasurer, in terms of every time she submitted it, it came back with something else, time and time and time and time again. So due diligence, I think is, hopefully will pay off, and the amount that we submitted for is...
Approximately $16,000.
Very good. So it would be great if we could carry through and get that. So thank you.
That would be...
Thank you, John.
I'll make it easy.
That's for sure.
Good job.
My last item is the, on behalf of the village clerk, who could not be here this evening, I would like to submit the tentative budget for fiscal year 2018-19 to the village board.
Thank you. Again, this is our proposed budget, or tentative budget going forward. The board still has work to do to be able to complete the budget for, in preparation for our public hearing at our next board meeting. So the next board meeting, we will have a public hearing scheduled for, for the budget. But I would like to thank everybody for the month of February where we met many times and went line by line through the, through the budget to really come up with a proposal that now we can address and bring, and hopefully bring forward.
Question, for the public hearing, is this the document that people should be looking at, or will it be, is this the, is this the people want to comment?
Unless we revise it going forward. We have a month to now review, make alterations, and then put the final forward for a public hearing, but we need to get that out.
Okay.
It would be in this format, yes.
No, but this format, but, but we may still tinker with a couple of minutes.
Absolutely. Yes, we may.
And I think it's worth noting that it is presented with a, the same tax rate as last year of $4.17 per thousand.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Next on the budget is police and courts. Let me just quickly read February. Total number of incidents, this is a police report for the month of February, total number of incidents in the town was 26, total number of incidents in the village was 80, total number of tickets for the town, 27, total number of tickets for the village, 87. Total arrests were four, and total number of accidents was nine, and we also had some snow ordinance tickets, of nine tickets issued during the month of February. Next item on the police agenda is, at our, at one of our workshops, we were able to bring forward a candidate for appointment to replace one of our police personnel that is leaving. So at this time, I would like to make, read into the, read into record for the position of a part-time police officer position, and this is from our sergeant, Sergeant Dunn, is requesting that the village board approve the hiring of Kyle Jennings as a part-time police officer. Kyle worked for the Rhinebeck Police Department from July 2015 to July 2016 and was an exemplary employee. He resigned to fulfill a full-time position with the Kingston Police Department. Kyle has transferred now to the Kingston Fire Department, which allows him the ability to return to the Rhinebeck Police Department as an officer. I am requesting that Kyle, Sergeant Dunn is requesting that Kyle be hired back at the rate of $21 an hour, per the collective bargaining agreement, Article 7, Section A, and after one year of employment, that pay rate should be 20, in that agreement is noted as $21 an hour. And then increased to $21.50 after 18 months of employment, which is also part of our collective bargaining agreement. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to hire Kyle Jennings as our part-time police officer.
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry, thank you. And next on the agenda for department reports is the fire department reports. Our fire company was here, but they left, so I will read into the report. This is for, again, for the month of February, our fire department, for the month of February, there were a total of 59 alarms in the fire department. There were 16 fire calls, 37 EMS calls, and six motor vehicle accidents. The ambulance did not respond to nine calls, so therefore our response time was only 79% during February. They have two new applicants, which are, which need village board approval, which are Frank Dietrich and Ryan Amy, which they would like to bring forward. I wish the chief was here to be able to talk about each or one of them, because I do not have the background for some of them. I don't know if the board wants to act or would like to have them present before we talk. So that's your board discussion before we vote.
What's the minimum age limit? Do they have, apparently 16.
What?
Is it Ryan, Ryan is 16?
Yeah. I think you'd be, you can be a junior member at 16 and then a full member at 18. Is what the age limit, that I'm aware of, yes.
So I mean, I'm comfortable that they're putting forth these two candidates.
I know, I only know of Mr. Dietrich, who is, wants to join as a member of the fire boards. That's my only knowledge.
This is the Frank that's our age?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think he's old enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
But how, so Ryan is, how old is he?
I don't know.
He's in my son's class, so he must be 16, 16 is probably the most, but... That's good.
Yeah.
He's a big, strong kid, so...
I mean, we take this as a recommendation fund, don't we?
Yes, yes. Right. And they need, we need that board approval for them to join.
Well, I move we accept the two new applicants, Frank Dietrich and Ryan Amy, to the village department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? So carry. Thank you. Next, building, planning, and zoning.
We have some numbers that I'll read very quickly into the record, and then I just have a couple of items that I do want to discuss with the board. Fees, Village of Rhinebeck, sign applications, $100. Please, scrolling. All right, there's still a case for paper, sorry. Sign application, $100, planning board discussion, $100, site plan applications, $175, 1,000 square feet, 1,000, 100, 100,000, 1,000 additional square feet, $100. I'm sorry. Come on, John. Special permit, $200, zoning variances, $150, area variance, $250, use variance, $350. I think that these, are fees that we're already probably familiar with, they're in the cloud. I know our team uploaded them. Operating permits, so in short, this is really a rundown of different fees that we have. I don't know that we need to do anything other than have them as part of the record here tonight.
Well, I would like to have, yes, our...
John?
Yeah. John, our, our building, planning, and zoning.
Well, those fees are the fees that we received over the last month.
Oh, fees received, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the fee schedule. You're talking about the fee schedule?
I'm actually talking about, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm on the fee schedule, John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm confused. Fee schedule?
Are you guys ready for the schedule?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Do you guys have copies of the schedule?
Yeah. You have it on paper? Everything's in the cloud.
Oh, you got one?
Thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I am here tonight to basically explain and present a proposed revision of our fee schedule. The last time we had a revision was five years ago. There were many items on that schedule that we just didn't account for, from solar systems to geothermal generators, even, and our escrows were way off. We were finding out that we were asking for a certain amount of money in escrow, and then we would have to chase everybody down because the fee was just way too low. So Gary actually helped me out with this. We pulled up some neighboring municipalities, villages, so we keep everything in line, from the village of Red Hook to Tivoli and Wappingers, and for the most part, we're a little bit higher than Red Hook, we're even with Tivoli, and we're way lower than Wappingers. And so the fee schedule, for the most part, is pretty accurate across the board in Dutchess County. Even with some townships, you know, townships having a bigger population, a lot more activity, they tend to be a little bit higher, but like I was saying, we're, we're pretty on the nose with a lot of this stuff. But like I was saying earlier, there had been some issues unaccounted for, the B&Bs that are going to be pretty much introduced into our community. We didn't really have them fitted anywhere in the fire inspections. Our renewal fees for expired permits, that actually went down. We were charging 75% of the entire cost, that, which was a little bit, it was a lot. And so we knocked that down to 50%. We kept our building permit fee, if you built without a permit, it was double the fee, that pretty much stayed the same. And then for the most part, everything was increased according to what we seen in our neighboring municipalities. And that's, that's pretty much it. I honestly think that, you know, with the increase of the cost of living and, and what the contractors are charging, we're pretty much in line. In fact, personally, I think we're a little bit even lower than we should be, but this is better than nothing.
But some have been adjusted, $25 up one way or down the other way, or $50 or et cetera.
Right.
And in one case, I know, you know, you've really applied more definition for some, you know, in terms of ability to, whether it's an inspection, building inspection in terms of, you know, square footage, et cetera.
Right, exactly. And what's happening, though, is, is when we're processing the permit, it's not like when you get a permit, it's handwritten, and you're basically thrown into a file and you're, and you're doing inspections and you're just documenting everything. Now we have a software program, we have to put all the information into that, we have to take all that information and give it to the assessor, we have to take that information, give it to the county, because they have to update their parcel access, and then we have our filing process. We have to do it electronically, and then we have to do it hard copy. So it's, it's a process. So we're, we're spending a lot more time administratively, as opposed to also doing the, and the inspections nowadays with the new energy code, there, there's so many things that we have to look out for that it, that we're becoming almost full-time record keepers. And so the fees that were increased, and they weren't increased much with respect to construction, 5 cents per square foot in residential and in commercial. The only thing that we were kind of losing money in, and not that we're supposed to be a money generator, but, a revenue generator, but we got to at least break even, and that was renovations. Our renovations were based off of square footage, and it was hard to get a, an exact square footage, so we have the option of square footage and/or the 1.3% of the cost of the construction, which comes out to be... of the construction, which comes out to be pretty much right on. So, so that's, that's the revision. I'm just looking for the board to either review it or vote on it next meeting, what have you.
One question, John, you mentioned, right now we're working on a hosting policy for people in the Airbnb-style accommodations. Is a fee for that in here somewhere, or is that still to be generated?
The actual fee for the processing of the application has not been put in here yet, because it's not even law yet. So until it's, you know, that'll be another minor revision down the road. Right now, the only thing that we have covered is the state mandated fire inspections, that the short-term rentals and B and Bs, they're required to have one annually, just because they open up their homes to the public. So they're going to be required to comply with the fire code. That's already established. The application fee has not. And so that'll be, that'll have to be introduced with, with the new law.
I'd like to make the suggestion that we actually have the board spend time to review this and adopt these fees, or make a recommendation or whatever we want to do, at our next monthly meeting, which is really our reorganizational meeting, when we could, I think, bring forward any new fees to adopt, and that we have time to get these out and, and have the information shared.
Okay, that's great. And then if the timing's right, maybe we could have that short-term rental fee in here. I can maybe update this.
I'd like to, I agree with you, Gary, I'd like to see what the fees are now, compare what the new proposed fees are. If we can have, if I can get that.
Oh, yeah.
Look at it side by side.
Sure.
I have it written down on my desk, if you would like.
Okay.
It's written, but I could save you the time of.
We have it on the website also, Howie.
Okay.
You can just go, you'll see, it's on the bottom right-hand, you click on that, and you can.
And I just have a question about operating permits, do we have something like that for now?
The operating permits, we, we don't, you know, we don't really have that many businesses that actually fall into that category. The churches may, but, you know, we may have to take a, a certain look with respect to a church. So, but as of right now, no. An operating permit would be something like a mass gathering.
Well, that's my question, because we have a mass gathering threshold, what is that again? Is that?
I think it's 300.
Well, that's the event code, right?
5,000 is mass gathering.
Oh, is it 5,000?
Yeah.
5,000.
So right now, we have an operating permit that states at 99 to 300, you would have to basically open up an operating permit. Say, for instance, Beekman Arms decides to have a wedding, and so what's going to happen is, they're going to have to actually pull an operating permit. We just want to make sure that the, whatever tents they install are fireproof, there's no open flames, you know, we're basically looking at everything with respect to the fire code.
But if somebody, somebody has a party in their backyard for a graduation, they got 100 people, are they going to have to get an operating permit?
They really should. I mean, that's, I, I understand.
That's crazy.
But, you know, we could look into that, you know what I mean? You know, if that particular person, you know, you know, addresses the zoning building department, we could take a look at what the operation, what they're proposing, you know. You know, a party like that is an impact to the community, but, you know, who says that they can't have one, but.
Brad, do you remember what the event code number is?
It's like 250 or 300.
Yeah, because we had this issue when, when we were talking about the event code, because I think originally it was 100 people.
I mean, this is a good point.
We talked 500, and then I think we met in the middle.
You know what I could do, Howie, I could take a look at the event code and, and the operating permit, and I can adjust it, so it's not overlapping, and it's a little bit more flexible.
The current schedule is 101 to 300 people, because 101 is the threshold.
For?
For an operating permit. That's our current law.
Knocked it down to 99. But that could be adjusted, you know, I'll take a look at everything, I'll, I'll circulate an email.
I thought you said we didn't have an operating permit.
No, we do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just don't have any businesses that require an operating permit.
Right.
Is a distinction drawn between commercial and non-commercial operations for an operating permit?
It is. You know, an operating permit, you know, requires a lot more, you know, compliance with the fire code. But, you know, the way the, the state mandates, it, it's, it's based off of occupants. So regardless of the use or what they're doing, you know, it's the occupancy that's kind of dictating when it's required. But let me do a little bit more homework on this, you know, this was one of the things I got plugged in at the end, and, you know, we had it on the books, just to cover the village with respect to liability, but I've never had one business or any event pull an operating permit.
What if the school has something going on in their theater there?
Again, a school is usually covered under the state, and they're exempt from local jurisdiction. You know, the state fire commissioner or the fire inspector, you know, they do their annual inspections on the auditorium, seats, exits, and all that, so that's just out of our jurisdiction.
Chuck, you said you benchmarked these against the Wapengers calls, Tivoli, and Red Hook.
Yeah, that was it. And, and the town, yeah, the town, the towns also, they're adjusting their fee schedule to kind of coincide with ours, even though they're different, it's a different municipality, but we're trying to keep everything pretty much the same, so.
And that's not just between town and village, that's between, as you mentioned, between village to village, and where we're going, you know, to have some compliance across the board.
Right. I mean, the, the, the unity with the pricing is definitely within the village municipality. With respect to the town, they're kind of like taking a look at how we're going to be changing our fees, and, you know, and I'm not sure where they are at with theirs, but I think they do want to keep things kind of consistent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, I think the recommendation is to review, submit, and then move forward over to next monthly meeting. Agreed?
Agreed.
What? Yeah, that's in there. So next, the next one is the highway department?
Gary, can I just, I'm sorry, I messed up, but if, if I'm still up to just a couple of things related to planning and zoning.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Didn't know you were.
No, no. I, I'm, I had the wrong file open, so I apologize, but there were a couple of things I wanted to discuss, because they've been pressing with the planning and boarding, planning and boarding, planning and zoning board, planning and boarding. Number one, I think the board is familiar with the issue of trying to, more than familiar with the issue of trying to expand the historic footprint, and I know the board is supportive of that, but I don't know where we are with the contract for the Neil Lawson.
It's been signed.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So, because I want to notify them that, you know, we're prepared.
I signed the contract and also signed the invoice prepared by.
And the P F.
Okay, thank you, thank you both. And, and two, I, I have left in the, in the clouds for the board to look at when you have an opportunity, that is the language about the possibility of creating a moratorium, a short-term moratorium on actually demolitions. So why, the concern is that we are bringing this consultant, this specialist on, to assist us with the effort to expand the footprint, the historic footprint, which gives the planning and zoning boards and us much more ability to, to manage who comes in and, and obviously how they structure new reconstructions, or, or most importantly, we want to prevent the tearing down of anything that might be historic. And there are some very recent incidents that have been troubling to, to the planning board, and of course, I've shared those with, with the village board. It's been suggested, and I got this from legal counsel above our own, Rich Olson's office, Angier, as well as Wade from New York City, from NICOM, that we could consider developing into the code a language that speaks to a one-year, would be harder to make it longer than that, moratorium on, on demolitions. We've learned also that whatever we, we do is going to need to go past the county planning and zoning advisory board for their input. So it's not anything we could do immediately, but what I would like to do is, I received from NICOM, actual examples of other towns, municipalities, specifically Tarrytown, which looks like it's a good model for us to consider. It's about two pages in the language that the village or the town board in Tarrytown implemented, you know, within the last couple of years, for the very same reasons that I'm discussing here tonight. So what I would like to be able to do is take that language, mold it into a template or into a draft for our code, share it with the board, and the board says, yeah, take it to the next step, which would be bringing it to council, bringing it to the county, that's what I would do. Again, all in an effort to try and prevent any external developers coming in with a gender that maybe isn't quite consistent with the desires of the village.
So with regard to the analysis of the historic prospects, how long, I'm thinking that process may not take too long.
So, right.
We could actually just amend our map instead of having more time.
Well, step one that Neil Lawson and his firm would be doing for us is to literally work the parameters of the, of the village and see what additional streets and what additional properties could be included into the, into the existing map. That's, that's step number one. Step number two would be actually doing the research, by the way, we need the consent of the homeowners, that they would be willing to participate, and that would take into research and ultimately filing both at the state and federal level. That part, the entire Neil project is, you know, I see in two phases. Phase one is probably about six months, putting together the specific properties, and then phase two is probably, guys, another 18 months, moving it through the state, moving, doing the research, moving through the state, and then moving it through the federal registration.
So we, we have a catalog of all the buildings from like, there's a date like 1932 or something and older, we have already inventoried all those properties in the village, and you can just hand this to him.
We.
That accelerates the process. Just so you know that, that, that's out there, it's probably in Ryan's office, but, you know, they're called contributing buildings.
Yeah. That's really be a critical piece of, of what Neil does, and to, you know, cooperating on this. I, I, I don't want to suggest that we have to wait, you know, two full years to take any type of village initiative or action. That's why we're exploring the moratorium. I don't, I just don't know where that will go, and whether ultimately it's something that we really want to do. But Brad, to your point, Neil's already said to us, you know, there's probably some things you guys could be doing, you know, in, in the interim, as he's developing what I consider the phase one, phase two solution for us. But on the upside, you know, in 24 months, and, and by the way, I'm pretty confident that I can get grants for this next phase, which Neil estimates to probably be about $7,500. I think we'll probably get about 80% of that covered. His total cost across the two years is probably about $10,000, $2,000 to start immediately, and then another $7,500 to $8,000 for phase two. But long before that, you know, we'll be working on, you know, potential grants.
So the moratorium would be in parallel to his effort, is what you're trying to propose?
Yeah.
And the moratorium is village-wide, or it's restricted to the historic preservation? I'm not clear.
Well, I think we can make it village-wide. I, I think if we, we don't want it, just have it restricted to what's in the historical footprint right now, I think that that's one, for the same reason, maybe that we want to expand the historical footprint. So if, if we were just to build them, tether the moratorium to the existing village footprint, then what about those properties that are outside of it? That's what we're really trying to attack.
So you're going to get us wording on this, that's really the next step?
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've got things that are already, that I can work with.
Okay.
The only thing I want to just finish up on is that it was very, as I'm doing all this, and it was recommended, you know, you really should be speaking to someone at the county, I found my way to a young woman named Shelby Frank. As luck would have it, John and Ryan had their own reasons to be reaching out to Shelby, invited me to their, their meeting, which was up here, and John had to leave early. I came in as I was supposed to on the agenda towards the end, and I, I just, as a complete aside, but I do want the board to know, I was very impressed with our new planning and zoning clerk. Ryan was running that meeting with two representatives from the county planning and zoning board, as well as Mike Gee from our own planning board, and you would have thought this young man had been here for, you know, two or three years. I was just very impressed with the way he managed the meeting, and just wanted to share that. There's nothing to do with planning and zoning.
That's great, Tom.
And that's it, thank you.
Highway Department.
Okay, actually, a question for John. I know the, this more time, I think it's way off in, or not way off in the distance, but I'd really like to know something about Tarrytown's experience, how this went. I mean, I, I, I don't know, I, I hear this, and I'm like, yeah, we need to protect the village, but at the same time, it seems like there's an awful lot of collateral damage to somebody who wants to move in. I'm sorry, I'd really like to know how, how this worked.
Yeah. Rick, I, I don't have an answer to that. We, we don't, we don't know what we don't know at this point. In this effort to, how do we stop this raising and somewhat, to some would argue, this rampant outside investment that's just coming in and tearing down properties, and there are specific cases that could be cited, this may or may not be a, a stopgap solution, and if it is, I, I don't know enough yet to understand what else might. That's why I'm very comfortable going to the, the advisory, or seeking advisement from the county planning department, that, you know, they said that's what we're here for, so.
I fully understand you're at the beginning of the process, I'm just, you know, as you go to it, boy, there's some red lights flashing.
Yeah, we have a lot to learn.
Yeah.
Yeah, it may well be, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? Highway Department.
Okay, I'm sorry, the highway superintendent, one of our, our good, good members of the department left, because I did get a couple nice comments from residents, they're very pleased that, had their streets were clean. So the department's been involved in this past month doing snow removal, mechanical maintenance, obviously, when you've got the snowplows running in this break. They've been out replacing signs, catch bases, cleaning out and repairs, and that's always important before a storm, because now we're going to have lots of runoff. They assisted with the water department in some repairs, and they've been doing tree trimming and removal. And obviously, we're going to have an ongoing program to pick up brush and such that have been, is there limbs and such that have been knocked down by the storm? I don't know what the schedule is.
So what I've heard is that normally we would start our, our regular brush pickup period off April 15th, that we're going to, the highway department would like to accelerate that and actually get started next week on starting to do some of the storm cleanup from a lot of limbs and trees that are down, and then gradually work into our normal regular schedule. So between now and April 15th, it will not be on a regular scheduled north side, south side, which would be put in place, but now it will be focused on areas where they, they know where we need to go and clean up, where trees are down, brush is piled up, et cetera.
Right.
So I believe they're going to get started doing some of that next week on working, you know, across the village to be able to make that happen.
Obviously, it's weather dependent.
Yes, yeah, but they have the capability right now to do it. So to everybody out there that has any storm or storm damage, please, if in doubt, please call the highway department, and you can get that information and move on. And, and schedule for, if you have a large amount, it's good to give them a call, so they know what they're anticipating. Water Department.
Okay, not much to report. Water treatment for February, total water was 11,198,000 gallons. The company HAC was on site for calibrating the turbid, turbid.
Turbidity.
Turbidment, yeah, for turbidity, that's what they were doing. Phosphate and liquid CL2 delivered, they did the second quarterly sample, sent to Albany in the distribution system. Again, thanks to, thank Anthony Valenti for the overnight, for during the second nor'easter of three, and I had a question with regard to, and this is sort of a highway question.
Sure. Sure.
With regard to the big water line project, if and when we get the grants, we get off and running, would, you know, I was talking to Mike Wolf and the storm drains are, the old like ceramic sections have been put together and they've been being infiltrated by roots. At this point, I think we're proposing that the water, the new water main would only be about six feet from the old storm drains. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't, why we have all the heavy equipment out there, look into, you know, replacing that with like big black, thirty-inch black plastic storm drains to redo all of that, you know, on Route nine. It's going to be, it would be expensive.
Would that be us or the state, or the state to do that on Route nine?
I think it'd be us.
I think it would be, yeah. What are they going to do it?
Because there aren't storm drains.
Right.
I don't know what their spec is for putting down on it.
Well, they'll have, they have to oversee it, and they will definitely have some contributions of how we have to do it.
Okay.
If we have the road opened up, it might be.
Right, over there.
Yeah.
And plus, means they won't have to pave it again once.
But there is a way to put some sleeves inside the existing pipes.
Yeah, you can do the lining thing. I was thinking about that for the water line.
Yeah.
If you're doing the infiltration, you've got to kind of root them out, right?
Well, yeah, what our problem is, we have ceramic pipes underneath the ground, and in between the ceramic pipes, there was probably cement at one time, and it's disintegrated, and that's where the tree roots go into. We have a video on this somewhere, hopefully we still have it somewhere. But, because we put a camera down there once, and the roots.
Not that long ago.
Yeah, the roots collect all the, like, plastic bottles and cloth or whatever gets into the storm drains.
Leaves, sure.
Leaves, yeah, yeah. So if there's a way to, we'd have to jet, we bought a jet, actually.
Yeah, but you have to kind of cut them out.
You have to kind of grind it.
It gets into like a, like almost a pilling.
Do you know what the diameter is?
No, not off the top of my head.
Well, I think it's important, something we can look into, right?
Yeah. I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea.
Okay. Anything else on water?
That's all, yeah.
Very good. Wastewater.
Wastewater. For February two thousand eighteen, we had three point seven million gallons of wastewater treated. We had thirty-two thousand five hundred gallons of sludge processed and five thousand sixty-seven pounds of sludge processed.
Those gallons of.
Gallons, gallons was the top one.
Gallons, gallons, pounds.
Right, right. Did I say that wrong? I'm requesting paper for next meeting, like Grant has, because I never can get my thing on here. Waste water department has had a few issues. One issue happened today with a pump at the, I don't know if you heard about this, at the hospital, one of the pumps went down, but luckily Pete has a backup on hand, so he can just put that in. That's what he does, usually has a couple of extra things on hand in case these emergencies happen. And everything else, he's trying to get an estimate for the dock that he's talking about. He went to three people, but he's having a hard time getting estimates, so I think he's got one so far. So he got an estimate from the excavator from Decker to lay the foundation where he's going to put this dock.
It's a loading dock, not a floating dock.
Right, loading dock, as opposed to floating, yes, yes. And that's it for the wastewater department.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the department reports as entered.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? So carried. Next, committee reports. First on the agenda is the tree committee.
Okay. Well, first off, start with some nice news. Rhinebeck is once again a, is a true city USA community, which basically goes to show our commitment to urban forestry and other items. It's something we occasionally have a flag for, we should look at proudly.
Is there an event coming up that?
Nobody knows when the date is.
Okay. Still out there.
In Albany for recognition of the tree.
Yeah. Yeah. In terms of the minutes, we had one request for a tree removal. The request was a little bit incomplete, and the direction was Pat is going to get back to the applicants. The recommendation from the tree committee is that the tree not be removed, but it be pruned. However, I think the homeowners were a little, didn't understand current village policy, which is that it's their responsibility to take care of the tree. So, which brings us to a resolution that was passed by the tree committee, and I'm going to read it if you guys don't mind. Given the frequency of storms we are experiencing and the aging population of our trees, the tree commission recognizes there are many hazardous trees in the right of way which either need to be pruned or removed. Whereas the trees in the right of way were almost entirely planted by the municipality years ago, whereas said trees benefit and increase the value of the homeowner's properties, they also increase the quality of life in the village of Rhinebeck. Whereas the commission believes that they cannot responsibly maintain our community forest without the pruning and removal of these trees. And whereas we are concerned that the present law, which puts the onus for this maintenance solely on the homeowner, has resulted in many of these trees not being addressed due to the expense to the homeowners. The tree commission asks, excuse me, the tree commission wishes to ask the board to revise the law back to a fifty-fifty shared cost factor for the pruning or removal of trees within the right of way. So basically, this stemmed around the discussion that, especially with the last storm, there are a lot of limbs that are coming down, there are people in the village who are unable to take care of their trees, or it's financial reasons, we have an ongoing problem. I consulted with Karen. The old budget line for tree pruning and removal was fifteen thousand dollars at the time, and currently it's, we're on a stump grinding line at this point. This is a policy decision. I know that the prior board made a policy decision, that would be one hundred percent the homeowner's responsibility, but the tree commission is asking that we reconsider that policy, both based upon the idea that maintenance is falling behind and that the character, or that that tree is a benefit not just to the homeowner, but also to the village at large. So I don't know if you guys want to talk about that, or how you want to move forward with that.
Well.
I told them I'd bring it forward.
Well, when we, I don't know, maybe Brad was, can remember, when we kind of changed this, it was all.
I think this was after I left.
Oh, well, it was all in concert with the sidewalk issue, where the homeowners are responsible for the sidewalks in the right of way, so therefore they should also be responsible for the trees in the right of way.
Okay. Although, I mean, we, actually, we're about to undergo a, our insurance company's leaning on us to get our sidewalks repaired, which means that come the spring, the, we're going to be out flagging people's sidewalks, and they're going to be having that expense as well.
Right.
Which is not inconsiderable. And I guess the question, since the overall question from the committee was, is it fair that something that is to some degree municipal utility be paid for by the persons who are on that property? For instance, I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house, so I don't pay anything, but I certainly walk on a lot of sidewalks.
But yeah, so to support Howie, you have a sidewalk, it is, you know, advantageous to the village for people to have sidewalks, for like people like yourself to walk, but yet they're responsible for maintaining it.
Right.
So I don't, I'm, I too am struggling with how do you do one without the other?
Yeah, I have a sidewalk, and I feel like I would, I would maintain it. I just feel like that should be my responsibility.
Okay.
As far as a couple of parkway trees that I have, they're little, but I think when they get big, I will, you know, also think that I should.
Okay. I mean, I guess the question is that there are some village residents who can't afford, can't afford to do either.
I know. They can't afford to do the sidewalk or the tree on those trees.
And I believe, so just so everybody knows, and I think you do, because I'd like you to know, I've asked trustee Lewitt to put together a sidewalk plan going forward, which hopefully will start to address some of these issues, because I think this is important, and there are people who we need to figure out, right, to do that. So along those same lines, if there's a tree issue, I think we need to figure it out. We need to have a plan going forward that's fair and consistent. So as part of the sidewalk plan, maybe you should consider part of the tree plan, you know, or if they're related, into that discussion.
I think, I want to get a sense of the board just when we get started. Are you guys at this point amenable to looking into a law change, or right now is it, or do you want to punt on that question?
No. I mean, when we were pressing the sidewalk code, I was concerned about people who could fix the sidewalk, because some people can't. Elderly fixed income people can't, couldn't. One lady came to a meeting once, said, I can't even hardly afford to pay my taxes. I can't fix my sidewalk, you know? And she sold the house and what, that's what she said. Not that, not, she didn't sell the house because of the sidewalk, but she was worried every night about somebody tripping on her sidewalk and suing her. So.
Well, the irony is that she doesn't get sued, we get sued.
Well, we do, we sue everybody, actually.
Right, so everybody. It's the first rule of lawyering, sue everybody.
We would never maintain the sidewalks. What we were doing is paying for the parkway tree damage, and then the homeowner did the rest.
Right.
We probably fixed ten, twelve sections that way, where we would give a portion based on what was attributable to the sidewalk tree, the parkway trees, and then they were paying.
Okay, so that was, that was one motive.
My working assumption right now is that we should look at it on a case-by-case basis, right? Because we do know there are hardship situations that, maybe there are alternatives that we can find grant money for, as an example, to work, to work with, to put into a pile that we can then, you know, so I'm not, I'm guessing right now. I don't know.
I guess, I guess I hate to, I hate to have to make somebody come up and present a hardship case, but that's an awful.
We have to keep the arbitrary, either.
Yeah.
We have to have a standard.
Well, I think, in my mind, I was thinking about an income, but I don't know if we can ever do that. Can you look at, somebody prove their income and they're not, I don't know.
I feel, I feel very, I'm very dicey about being uninvasive.
Right.
And also, you know, somebody's in company, or you're single, or you, you know, you have two kids in company.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so it's hard, it's a hard.
So Rick, I believe this is something that you need to consider as part of the sidewalk campaign.
Sure.
You know, as we're going forward, because that, we do have a column of those sidewalks, and we are under pressure by our insurance company to fix and repair, as everybody knows, because we have had several lawsuits, you know, that we've had to pay out on because of it. So this, and I know, and I know sidewalks are near and dear to you.
I love them.
And near and dear to all of us, but I think it takes, I would like to see a proposal come.
Oh, no, of course, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to get a quick sense of the board, just to kind of get a quick, just a quick airing.
If you had to take my temperature, I would say I'm not interested in changing your rent, although, but I could be persuaded.
And one of the other problems we had was, even though we did have fifteen thousand, that money would go like in, in the first six months because.
Absolutely.
It'd be the first three that did it, and then it'd be done.
Yeah.
Well, but maybe then that comes to more, having a plan to do some more regular, you know, regular payments. So I will look into that, but I'm just glad, just wanted to float the idea.
You have to think about those that might come forward and say, well, gee, this is not fair. And I think we can all think of some recent cases, where, wait a minute, now, now you're doing this?
You're right.
I see, no, no, I think that these are, I mean, I think that unfortunately, we're trying to weigh a bunch of rights, basically, or, you know, things that are correct, like somebody just paid, I would be upset too, but somebody who can't pay, they're upset.
It's throwing.
You're going to have to balance this somehow. And so I'll come up with a plan to split the baby. Just, I think you guys can look over there.
Yeah.
So, okay. And the other thing is that the, on the fun side, the tree commission is moving forward, they have accepted about half of the sites for tree plantings. So far, there are six sites, or I should say, six trees, but they expect to have more trees coming in as, basically homeowners have been queried, they'd like to have a tree, some people have come forward, and we've simplified the paperwork to do that, which has been really nice. And the tree committee is basically gearing up to do that. So, and it's a great, fun day.
When is that?
It's Arbor Day, I believe, which is the first, I believe, I have to look. One more meeting, one more meeting, so we're all.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
Very good. Ethics committee?
I have no report, someone can report.
No. I ran into Megan, I said anything going on? She says, nope.
Megan.
Meg, Meg, Meg Crawford. Not Meg Crawford. What am I thinking of? No.
Carol.
I'm thinking of Gina Fox. I don't know why I said Meg. I'm reading Meg Crawford on your thing here, sorry.
You confused me, Howie.
I know.
Must be the time.
I'm glad you picked up on it, though.
Uh, Grant, short-term vacation rental committee.
Thursday, two days from now, the fifteenth, we're going to have a workshop at seven o'clock.
Very good. Environmental committee report, we've had that, so those presentations were part of that, so nothing new. Howie, anything on the park committee in addition to what was done?
No, they didn't have a meeting last month either, so.
John, grant advisory committee.
I'm sure the board will support my desire to bring on another member. This is a gentleman who has just relocated to the, to Rhinebeck, Sanjay Kosla. And Sanjay, and I met last week, he had reached out, by the way, to Mayor Bassett, said, I'm new here, I want to get involved, what can I do? Shared with the mayor his resume and a little bit of background, and the mayor said, you know what, talk, talk to John, and I'm glad that he did. So Sanjay has recently retired, is in the process of relocating here with his wife. His background is completely in the area of finance, Fortune 500-type financial services. He's worked for Face Data, First Data, has worked extensively in risk management, has nearly forty years managing global financial portfolios. Really, a gentleman, very impressive, articulate, clearly someone who thinks things through. I'd like to bring him on to my committee, and I assured him that I would discuss his role as a committee member with the board and seek your support.
Is that a motion?
And that is a motion.
That's it? Second, by Howie. All, any discussion?
It's very impressive.
Very impressive.
Yes, I've met with him as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you. Just one last question, is there an optimum size of your committee?
I think once you get beyond like four or five people, I think any committee is probably taxed once you get to more than that.
Okay.
But you have another individual?
Not yet. No, I just, in case one comes, I want to be able to toss them your way.
Yeah, no, please do, yeah. I'd rather speak to people and.
Very good. Yeah, because I'm, I'm always looking for people who want to help and support our, our village in any way.
And clearly, what I'm learning is that there's lots of different functions that I could be assigning people, you know, you're good at proofreading and everything. I see Sanjay more at the front end, helping me kind of filter through some of these grants. The only other thing I do want to share with the board is that it's been scheduled and rescheduled a couple of times, but I am meeting now scheduled for four o'clock tomorrow afternoon with the director in the Mid Hudson for the New York State Empire Development Grants. So these are big-ticket items, and honestly, I just don't know a lot about them. I see the stuff that comes through, the grants gateway, I'm familiar with the sort of things pretty well right now, but this, what I, again, would characterize as bigger ticket possibilities, I'm just not that enough acquainted with. So, long story short, Megan Taylor, the director, has agreed to meet with me, and I'll be driving down tomorrow afternoon there in Windsor, and obviously be reporting back to all of you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve all the committee reports that have been entered.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Objected? Abstained? Thank you. Next, special request. We have one peddling permit, which is for Boy Scout Troop Two Twenty-Eight, their annual food drive. This was submitted by Jennifer Beekert on behalf of the Boy Scout Troop, Boy Scout Troop Two Twenty-Eight. drive for two local food pantries at the Reinbeck Reform Church. This is an annual event that is always held. Any discussion or, they've gone through the process, submitted their application, there are actually no issues for flag or anything, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve Boy Scout Troop 228 Annual Food Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstained, so carried. Thank you. Next, well, Course Fest twenty-eight, we've covered, and so now we'll go back to...
Memorial Day.
Pardon?
Memorial Day Parade.
Memorial Day Parade, yes, that's where I'm going to now. Memorial Day Parade. I'm pulling it up right now. This is submitted by American Legion Post, American Legion Post four twenty-nine. Dear Board Members, as May approaches, we again are in the process of organizing our annual Memorial Day ceremonies and parade, scheduled for Monday, May twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, at ten thirty a.m. We request permission to conduct the parade and ceremonies and also request that Mulberry Street, north of Platte Avenue, be closed for all non-participating traffic during lineup. The parade will line up on Mulberry Street, north of Platte Avenue, and utilize the fields at Dutchess County Fairgrounds to the corner of Platte Avenue and Mulberry Street, as well as a large field next to the former police, Village Police Headquarters. The parade will step off promptly at ten thirty a.m. and proceed south on Mulberry Street to East Market Street, then west on East Market Street to Route nine, and south on Route nine to Reinbeck Cemetery, where ceremonies will take place following the conclusion of parade. We would like to request that Village Police Department be on duty for the lineup, parade, and ceremonies, and would like the Village Police Car to lead the parade if possible. If permission is granted, we would like to invite the Village Board to participate in the lineup of March, which is planned to form on Mulberry Street at nine thirty a.m. If any member of the Board requires a vehicle, please make the appropriate arrangements. We do not have the capability of providing vehicles for participants. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation, and we look forward to seeing you on Memorial Day. Respectfully, John Spencer, Parade Chairman, American Legion, American Legion Post four There was only, I did talk to Sergeant Dunn, and Sergeant Dunn does have one issue that he would like to be concerned, and that is, what is the rainy day plan? If you remember, last year, we did have a rain day event, which, we still helped the parade, which was very fine, but the parade ended abruptly and actually gave our police department some agita, to put it mildly. So, because we didn't have a plan put in place. So, Pete would like to meet with the parade organizers just to establish that plan for the event of another rainy day, so we, in concern for public safety, that we have in place an alternate decision to be able to exercise so that they can operate and know what the plan is. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Memorial Day Parade for Monday, May twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, at ten thirty eight, contingent on our sergeant and our police meet with the parade committee to establish a rainy day plan.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, what are you saying, that, does he refer to that maybe the parade ended at the Legion? He said, "And you have to have the..."
So, yeah, what happens...
More congestion there?
No, what happened was, they didn't know the parade was ending.
Oh.
And therefore, traffic, parade participants were now headed up South Street, and there was actual, they were very concerned about public safety because they had nothing in place to protect traffic or stop if now we had parade going up there, so...
No, I understand.
That was the issue, it was just, in effort of having public safety, if there's a rainy day event, what do you do? And have a plan, and have that plan in place. It was confusing, did cause a lot of scrambling for our police department to be able to do it. In fact, the lead police car continued and didn't even know that the parade had stopped until, is that, so it is important in the efforts of public safety, so that's why I'm making a contingent on that.
I have just a question, is there a communication between the sergeant and whoever is in charge? I mean, how's that decision going to get made in the future? Unless, does somebody's on the same page, trying to coordinate?
For the rainy day plan?
Yeah, rainy day plan.
So, they need to come in and establish a plan and work with, work with the police department to establish it, and then as part of that, they would establish the communication of, "It's really bad out here, let's execute Plan B."
Carry.
All right. So, it's really for public safety.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we vote?
No.
We lost Brent. Go to the corner. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, so approved, continued on the rainy day plan. I am writing behalf of the Parkinson's Disease Support Group of the Mid Hudson Valley, of which they are a chair, as the Village of Reinbeck has done for a number of years. We request, respectfully request that you join the U.S. Senate each year that declares April as Worldwide Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. I have attached a proclamation template, which you can fill in or copy into your own document, sign in need if you choose, and affix our seal. Last year, the Village of Reinbeck and thirty-two other Hudson Valley municipalities issued a similar proclamation for twenty seventeen, as did the New York State Senate and Assembly. Won't you please join us in our twenty eighteen effort? The simple act of education awares would be most helpful in spreading the word about the devastating disease and the need for care. The document can be mailed to me at the address respectively yours, Nancy Redkey, seventy-three West Claude Mountain Road, La Grainsville, New York, since the Village clerk. So, I can read the proclamation, which I will, so we can have it into record. Proclamation Awareness Month, Parkinson's Awareness Month proclamation, excuse me. Whereas Parkinson's Disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder of the central nervous system, which has a unique impact on each patient. And whereas, according to Parkinson's Action Network, the Parkinson's Disease Foundation, the American Parkinson's Disease Association, and the National Institutes of Health, there are over one million Americans diagnosed with Parkinson's Disease. And whereas, symptoms include slowness, tremor, difficulty with balance in speaking, rigidity, cognitive, and memory problems. And whereas, although new medicines and therapies may enhance life for some type of people with Parkinson's, more work is needed for a cure. Whereas, an increased education and research are needed to help find more effective treatments with fewer side effects, and ultimately, a cure for Parkinson's Disease. And whereas, a municipality approach to Parkinson's Disease care includes local wellness, support, and caregiver groups, and whereas, April has been proclaimed as Worldwide Parkinson's Awareness Month for all to recognize the need for much more research and to help in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's Disease. Now, therefore, we, the Village of Reinbeck, Mayor, and the Village Board of the Village of Reinbeck, do hereby proclaim April as Parkinson's Awareness Month in April of twenty eighteen. Given under my hand in these United States, and the Village of Reinbeck on this day of two thousand and eighteen, in which I would have caused a seal for the Village of Reinbeck to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. I'd like to make a motion to accept the proclamation for Parkinson's Disease awareness in the month of April.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Thank you. Okay, moving along. The next item to discuss is, we received an increase in our legal fees for Thomas, Doron, Waxman, and Pedigro and Mail, LLP. If you, for those who don't know, this is the firm that provides us, they are labor attorneys. Point short. And Mr. Waxman is our primary contact for our labor, if we need a labor attorney. So, Dear Mayor Bassett, at about this time each year, we advise clients of any anticipated changes in fees for the coming year. Because of the continuing difficult economic climate facing municipalities and financing operations, our firm has not increased our hourly rates since two thousand and eight. However, for the upcoming fiscal year, we are proposing a five-dollar increase in our hourly rate. Therefore, the attorney rate will be increased from two hundred to two hundred and five dollars per hour, and paralegal services will be increased from ninety to ninety-five dollars per hour for the period of July twenty eighteen through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. If this proposal is accepted to you, I would appreciate your presenting it to the Board for review. I have enclosed a duplicate copy for signature. If it is approved by the Board, I would appreciate your executing it and returning it to me. It will constitute an agreement between the Board and our office. I don't think there is any thoughts?
Two and a half percent?
About two and a half percent, going from two hundred to two hundred and five dollars.
Correct.
Doesn't seem...
I don't think they raised, I don't think they raised last year, but I don't know.
No, I just read that, they have not raised their rates since two thousand and eight.
I'm reading some.
That is different, aren't you?
Yeah, show me.
Two thousand and eight, stay on the same page, guys.
Okay.
All right. Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the legal fees for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, for Thomas, Rohan, Waxman, Pedigro, and Mail, LLP, as our labor attorneys to the new fees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you. Correspondence. Open that up quickly. We have two correspondences. And, "To our friends at the Village of Reinbeck, thank you for the beautiful flowers and sympathy of Henry's passing. Thanks in addition for all that is done to make Henry's funeral services so benefiting. Henry loved Reinbeck and losing a part of, and being a part of the local scene with sincere regards, Ann." And this is the family of Henry Campbell and his great aile, and we received this thank you card, okay? Next correspondence from Whitebeck, Benadick and Smith, Attorney advising prior resolutions, you know, et cetera. Dear Mayor Gary Bassett, members of the Reinbeck Village Board, letters of interest for Village. Dear Mayor Bassett, and this got, unfortunately, the scan got mixed up with this, so I do not have all of it in the middle. My scan copy got blurred. My white talk's...
Pretty long.
Oh, geez. So, can we summarize this?
Let me get it here.
So, Dear Mayor Bassett, members of Village Boards, I write to express the firm's interest in becoming attorneys for the Village of Reinbeck for the Village of twenty eighteen fiscal year. Our attorneys are experienced municipal labor and employment procurement, environmental land use, real estate law, and have successfully defended municipal clients in Article seventy-eight with tax centaria proceedings. We can provide a complete range of services to your village. I think that's really what we need to do in terms of, I would now like to enter into discussion, into entertaining the possibility of other labor. This is something we normally do, not at this time, but normally do at our organization meeting in April of twenty eighteen. So, I would like to, you know, at this time, I really do not see any need for change, you know, from our current labor force that is doing it, but if the Board so wishes, we could seek additional, and that would give us some information going into the April twenty eighteen.
They're proposing an hourly rate of one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, if we did that, we would have to, you know, almost post that we're taking overtures from...
Seeking business.
Yeah, seeking business.
Right. So, what is the Board recommendation on moving, on this?
I believe we have no problem with our current attorneys.
Any other comments?
I've always been happy with the budget line with our current attorneys.
My too. All right, so I'd like to make a proposal that we are thankful for the submission and their interest in wanting to be attorneys for the Village of Reinbeck, but at this time, we so choose to decline, and we'll stay with our current, and we'll, unless something happens, we'll approve that at our April meeting. Okay? That was a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstained? Carry? So, thank you. All right, next, minutes approval. These are our budget workshop minutes on two thirteen, two twenty, and two twenty-two. Any suggestions, questions on these minutes? I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thirteen, twenty eighteen, the two twenty eighteen, and the two twenty-two eighteen minutes that were released to the Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Very good. Okay, go ahead.
I just had a couple of comments on the short-term rental, I could have, I looked at it before we hit the meeting. On the short-term rental meeting, February twenty-second, on page four, one, two, like fourth or fifth paragraph, it says, "Committee Chair Kevin Curry asks how the Village will know if more..." It's really a committee member. Kevin Curry asked how the Village will know if more than two bedrooms will be rented up. Do you have that Karen?
I'm getting it right now.
And then only one more, simple one.
She left that up.
Okay.
And then, about the eighth or ninth paragraph, it says, "Trustee Utiker explained that for short-term room rentals, one can rent out weekends up to forty nights for up to six people a year," and I think he meant to say a stay, six people per stay or something like that.
Okay.
Instead of per year.
Okay.
And that is a calendar year, is that correct? Does that have been noted that it's really on a calendar year?
Yeah, I said per annum, for the forty nights.
Right.
Forty nights per animal per year.
Okay.
And for up to six people, per stay.
All right. At this time, any personnel issues that we need to come up? Very good, having no personnel issues?
Where are we going to?
An executive session.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, when we get out of, okay.
Oh, there is a personnel issue, yes. I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Water Department?
Yes.
Yes, that's what you're thinking?
Yes.
Yes, at this time, I would like to offer our chief water plant operator, Brian Alex, you know, effective at the next pay period, a two-dollar increase going forward.
Well, can we talk, did we talk about this in executive session, or we talked about it now? Like, what's he getting paid now?
Oh, we did, we, this, we did discuss this at our workshop.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, and we all, okay, okay. I didn't know this was different.
Yeah, no, this is the same thing.
Okay, yeah.
It's the same thing we discussed at the workshop, and we decided to pull this one forward.
Right, right.
Right, to recognize the efforts of Brian Alex, who we promoted up from a water plant operator to chief water plant operator, and recognizing him for his commitment to act as the chief water plant operator.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
He's been doing well for, at this role, for what, eight or nine months?
Yes, yeah. So, again, the motion is to offer Brian Alex a two-dollar increase.
Second.
Seconded.
Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstained? So carried. Very good. Thank you for a reminder. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a union contract negotiation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. All right, I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session and enter back into normal session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the March thirteenth, twenty eighteen meeting at ten-ten.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstained? So carried.